Good morning and welcome. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. And for your information, if the room does fill up and all the seats are taken, there's an assembly room downstairs that is hooked up by television to this room. So there will be people in the back, we'll be moving people downstairs. We do not want people standing in the back or in the aisle. So just please have a seat. And again, welcome. Would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public, for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take the roll, please.
Commissioner Steven Anstott.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Westner.
Present.
Chair Leo Molitor.
Present.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez.
Here.
The next item on the agenda is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Anyone wish to speak on that? Item five is approval of the July 1st, 2010 minutes.
Move for approval, is presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, I missed that meeting. Carry three to one. Item six is approval of the July 15 amended minutes that we received.
Move for approval, is presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
I abstain, I wasn't present.
Still carries three. Let me make an announcement right now is how the voting goes. We have five members of the commission. Nothing can pass without three votes. So if we only had three members here, we would have to have all three support any actions. We have four members here today, so for any action to be supported and passed, it needs a vote of three commissioners. Item number seven is LU 60011, Santa Clara Wastewater applicant. The request is to upgrade an existing wastewater treatment facility by changing the operations from an open aeration pond system to a closed tank vessel system, and for the abatement of zoning violation case number ZV 87-027 for the expansion of the facility without obtaining the required permits. The project, the case planner is Becky Linder.
Good morning, I'm Becky Linder from the County Planning Division, here to present major modification to conditional use permit 960, case number LU 06-0011, Santa Clara Wastewater. For your information, a memo has been handed out with revised language for a condition of approval for the staff report, and I will talk more about it later in my presentation. The proposed project is located at 815 Mission Rock Road, Santa Paula, in the community of Mission Rock Road. The parcel consists of one legal lot according to a certificate of compliance that was recorded in 1991. The general plan designation of the parcel is existing community, and the zoning is M3, 10,000, which is general industrial, 10,000 square foot lot size minimum. This is an aerial photo of showing the parcel looking from the north, and this is another one looking from the south. This gives you a closer view of the site, and also shows you, gives you a better perspective of the, they're called closed vessel tanks, and those are the green tanks that you see right in here, that are part of the project upgrade for the processing of wastewater. It also shows you where the entrance to the facility is, over here where the trucks will come in, and it shows the office trailers and various equipment that they have on-site now in the middle. And this is where the open aeration ponds were, but are now filled in. The CUP dates back to the 1960s when Santa Clara Wastewater took over the permit from Shell Oil Company, and in 1998, a zoning violation was issued to Santa Clara Wastewater for the addition of new equipment and additional uses on the site without the required permits. And in October of 1998, Santa Clara Wastewater entered into a compliance agreement with the Planning Division to abate those violations. In February of 2006, Santa Clara Wastewater submitted the request before you for a major modification to CUP 960 for the upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant facility, which is changing it from an open aeration pond system to a closed tank vessel system. The project also includes 1,600 cubic yards of grading, construction of a grass berm surrounding the perimeter, and construction of a grass containment basin for runoff and drainage, and a 1,440 square foot office trailer. Approval of the proposed CUP modification is expected to abate all existing violations. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and closed on Sundays. The trucks would be allowed to enter the site for waste delivery and disposal, and then pickup of recyclable products, Monday through Friday, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturdays, and no trucking on Sunday. However, the facility would operate at any time during any day of the week as necessary to meet the demand that may be placed on the facility, or that may occur on an emergency The site plan shows, this is, whoops, the proposed site plan shows how, again, how the trucks will enter, and how the flow of traffic will go, trucks and traffic will come into this facility, go into the industrial bay area, and drop off the waste, and they'll have, this is where they'll do some screening, and then they'll leave right back out through where they came in. And then, this area is the area of the closed vessel tanks, which will be covered with awnings, will have, for water processing. This is the location of the two, the two office trailers and the parking, and this is additional parking for employees. And in the middle is the resource stockpile area, and various equipment, other processing wastewater equipment in here. This is the grass, water retainer basin, and the grass berm will surround the project perimeter on all three sides here, both sides, except for the driveways. The elevations of the existing and proposed buildings and awnings are, this is the floor plan, shows the floor plan and the elevations, they're one-story, and they meet the setbacks and the elevation requirements of the zone. This is showing you this metal sheds and the typical, typical view of the awnings that will be placed over the tanks. The proposed project was determined not to have a significant effect on the environment, and a negative declaration was prepared. To date, the Planning Division has not received any comments during the public review period on the negative declaration, or on the CUP modification request. The Planning Commission notice was sent to the city of Santa Paula, and surrounding Mission Rock Road properties, and no comments have been received. I wanted to take a minute just to talk about the revised condition. Staff, we decided to revise the language of condition 13, which is included in Exhibit 5, page 11, which is actually page 83 of the packet of the Planning Commission for today, and your memo shows the changes in legislative format, and in the existing conditions, A, B, C, D, E, F, and F are lined out, and will be replaced with the new A, B, and C. I can read them to you if you would like, or would you like, would the commission like me to read the changed language, or pass on that?
Commissioner, do you want it read, or you're okay, just, I think we're all right.
You're okay? Okay. Staff has reviewed the proposed project, and has concluded that, as conditioned, it is consistent with the applicable policies of the Ventura County General Plan Goals, Policies, and Programs, and with the regulations of the Ventura County Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance, as shown in Section 2A of your staff report, Conditional Use Permit Findings and Supporting Evidence. And now I'd like to read the recommended actions. Certify that your commission has reviewed and considered this staff report and all exhibits heretofu, thereto. Approve and adopt the sequel findings and substantial evidence contained in this staff report, Section 1. Adopt and find, excuse me, adopt the attached final negative declaration, Exhibit 4. Prepare for this project. Approve and adopt the conditional use permit findings and substantial evidence contained in this staff report, Section 2. Approve case number LU 060011, subject to the attached conditions, Exhibit 5, as revised. Direct the planning director or her designee to file a notice of determination pursuant to sequel guidelines, Section 15075, upon the Planning Commission's approval of this project, and specify that the Planning Division is the custodian of the documents pertaining to the subject permit and environmental document, and that the location of those documents shall be in the Planning Division files. That concludes my presentation. The applicant and his representative are here for any questions. Are there any questions of staff?
Before we have questions, I'd like to, we'd like to have disclosures, but what I'd like to do for the people who are here is to basically go over how these meetings are conducted. First, we have a presentation of a staff report, which Becky just did. The next item is, the commissioners have disclosures if they've received any other information prior to what's in the packet, or what's been delivered here. Thirdly, we can, we might have questions of Becky. The next item, I open a public hearing, the applicant or the appellant makes a presentation in the public hearing, then I hear from, I hear from people who are in favor of the action being recommended or proposed. Next, we will hear from people who are opposed to the action. Next, the applicant can have a rebuttal to any opposition to it. Then we have closing comments by staff. Then I close the public hearing, and the Planning Commission deliberates. So let's continue on with this, and we will ask for disclosures of the planning commissioners. At this time, I would like to each, ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information, only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Commissioner Anstott?
I have viewed the site, and I'm familiar with it, I have no disclosures.
Thank you. Commissioner Westner?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
No disclosures.
The only disclosures I have is I read both articles in, in the Star this last week, about this hearing, and about the detestable act of spraying on that, on the facility. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. I jumped ahead. Disregard that. Scratch it from the record.
Okay.
Thank you. I have no disclosures on that case. Are there any questions of the commissioners to the staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Becky, there's no comment in here, so I'll ask you, have there been any complaints about stacking of the vehicles in the morning to deliver waste product? I didn't see any comment. I know in other entities where we have had a tendency to have dump trucks stack up prior to opening them, at the mines, et cetera, have any complaints in that regard?
No, I have not had any complaints regarding truck stacking. None.
Okay, then my next question, I'll direct to whomever would like to answer. Getting back to, since we've been battling this extensions of CUPs and time periods, 3B and conditions, it allows the planning director, after the 30-year CUP, grant an extension, but it's, unlike the other ones, it's not specific. So I didn't know if that was intentional by the staff, that's page 78 of our report. The CUP shall expire on August 30th, 2040. The planning director may grant a time extension, usually we put a time period.
Oh, for the next extension.
Yeah, would it be 10, would it be 20, or it'd be typical, it's a duplicative of what we've given them, which would be another 30.
I defer that to my manager, Dan.
I would say, just given the fact that it's a 30-year permit, I wouldn't want to give a 60-year permit, so I think at the time that we look at it in 30 years, we would take into consideration, you know, if it's inconsistent with the general plan policies and the surrounding land uses at the time, and then establish an appropriate date at that time.
Okay, so you wouldn't be extending another 30-year permit at that point? It wouldn't be another 30 years?
I think that we would, at that point, we would really have to go back, we would have to look at the environmental documents, see if any of the findings had changed, you know, there would be a complete review, to then determine how long, how much longer of a time period that we would be giving them.
Okay. So, so it would come back to the commission at that time, rather than the planning director's prerogative to extend?
It says the planning director may grant a time extension, provided that it meets all those things. So it's not saying that it's going to come back to the planning commission?
It depends on whether it's a major or minor modification, if it's a, you know, if they're asking, say, for a five-year extension, and no changes are made, and it's a minor modification, that decision can be made at the planning director level. If it's a major modification, then it comes back to the decision-making body, which is you.
Thank you.
Why, why 30 years?
That was actually given to Santa Clara Wastewater in 1990, when they went before the planning commission at that time.
So it's, it's 30 years from 1990?
It was 40 years.
And now it's 30 years?
Yeah, oh yeah.
But we normally don't grant, we normally don't grant CUPs for that long. Is this because it's a wastewater, or?
Yeah.
That's a long time, considering that they've had two violations, one in 1998 and one in 2002.
Mm-hmm. It is a long permit.
Well, I would say, you know, it's a, it's a period of time which your planning commission can have a different period of time, but also, you know, the enforcement actions that are happening now are different than they did before, you know, we actually have a person that does condition compliance, and we can have a more frequent compliance on this site, but I would say a 30-year timeframe for the investment that they've put in the property is not unreasonable.
Thank you. Becky, one other question, on page 17, there's just a minor, on page 17 where it says, under Section D, "New Equipment," it said, "The following list identifies new equipment and structures," but I don't see those structures on that list. Is that just a typographical?
I'm trying to find it, on the staff report?
Yes.
Page 17?
Page 17, under Section C.
Oh, C.
New, new equipment, and it lists everything, but I don't see the trailers or the structures that are being built.
When you look at Exhibit 3, the proposed site plan, is that what you're referring, you don't see it on there?
No, I don't see it, where they list, they say, "The following list identifies new equipment and structures," shown on the proposed site plan.
Right.
But it doesn't show the trailers. It shows it on the site plan, but not on the, it's a-
Oh, 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 the trailers, okay. All right, yeah, it should add the trailer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Anstott?
What's the purpose of the berm? Excuse me, what's the purpose of the berm surrounding the project?
The containment berm was recommended by the Public Works Department, Watershed Protection District, as a containment of any, anything that may spill out, you know, it's not likely, but it's to control, and also to control any rain runoff.
Is it three-sided, or all the way around, except for the entrance?
It's four, except for the entrance and exit. It's, if you look at Exhibit 3, your proposed site plan, the, the grass berm is also along Mission Rock Road, Cummings Stream, it surrounds the site on four sides, except for the driveways.
I've had some experience with the Mission Rock Road Property Owners Association, the properties out there, and I noticed the drainage covert makes a hard right there, that was changed long ago, and that, it was at one point in time, that area near the entrance, subject to surface flooding. Is that still the case, or have improvements been made to remedy that? My involvement's been 15 years ago, 20 years ago.
How many, 15 years ago? Well, since that time, they did make some road improvements through the Mission Rock Road Owners Association, that was one of the requirements when they received their conditional use permits from the planning commission back in 1990. That was one of the problems. I think that they still may have some problems with flooding on Mission Rock Road, but I understand that their association is responsible for maintaining the Mission Rock Road.
Do we have any incidences of flooding recently, this year?
I'd have to defer to the applicant's-
I guess my question was, if we do get surface flooding, given the nature of the project, will that create a problem?
No, because they're going to have the, the grass berms surrounding the project, and-
Maybe she got a 30-foot open door right there to let the water ride in at the-
I would just point your attention to page 69 of the staff report, where our flood control, our Watershed Protection Districts has reviewed the project under Item B, 26B, where it says, "The Public Works Agency comments that the proposed project would not significantly alter the drainage patterns or the route of the surface water runoff, therefore, there would be no adverse impacts, both project-specific and cumulative, relating to the drainage." So they looked at it, the Watershed Protection District and our Public Works Department, and came to this conclusion in the initial study.
I'm assuming that Property Owners Association has a maintenance plan for that Cummings Brank of their ditch.
Yeah, and probably the property owner could speak to that.
Yeah, and there was a drainage study done also.
Could you, could you describe what's being discharged into, into that adjacent brank, and into the Santa Clara River?
Yes.
That's, whatever discharge goes into the river, I assume is permitted by the Regional Water Quality Board?
That is correct.
Okay, well, what, what are we discharging?
If you look at page 15 of your staff report, it discusses what they do, the proposed upgrade would allow Santa Clara to separate into two waste streams, two liquid discharge streams, a brine discharge, well, that goes to the city of Oxnard Wastewater Treatment Plant via pipeline.
Right.
And then, the non-brine will involve piping to an outfall located at the northwest corner of the facility and drainage. And so you wanted to know specifically what was going, what was going to be in there?
Yes.
Let's see.
The other question I have too, is that, is that inspected on some, some frequency by Regional Water Quality?
Yes, it's inspected, the water's treated there at the facility before it goes out and into the, discharge into the river, and it is inspected by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. They have permits from the state.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one more question. I talked to the planning director, are we, you're doing a cumulative review of the conditional use permits, is that going on now, or coming up?
Accumulated-
Well, you were, I think you told me you were looking at that Mission Rock Road area.
Yes, they, many of the applicants at Mission Rock Road are in for their extension permit, so we're looking, I believe, at the majority of them right now, they're in for permit renewal.
Were you trying to coordinate the permits on a time basis, so they roll up together?
Yes.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
Next, we'd like, we would like a, a presentation of the applicant, and I have two cards on that, Steve Pearlman, Charles Monday, whoever wants to speak first, please state your name and address.
Just Chair, Members of the Commission, I'm Steve Pearlman, 7811 Marin Lane Ventura, and with Chuck Monday, he is the manager of Santa Clara Wastewater System. And I'd like to just state a couple of things, we don't, we don't have anything to add, we've been working with Becky now, by the way, I'm a land use planning consultant, and been working with projects in Mission Rock Road now since year 2000, I think it came before the commission in 2002, for all, we had everybody in together at that time. Basically, just want to say that this is an environmental upgrade, and equipment, technology, all changes dramatically and quickly, so that this is to bring it up to current environmental and equipment technology standards. To just briefly go over the flooding, or perceived flooding issue, yes, in some cases, there's standing water, but I think over the years, with watershed protection, LA Regional Water, this is an arduous, long process to get everyone through regional water, to meet watershed protection, flood control, Public Works Association, so we have complied with that in every instance in this case, and all the others that are being processed for time extensions and all. I think that, and I have to agree with the planning director, that this is a necessity for, to have a 30-year timeframe on this, because this is a big investment, and I'll let Mr. Monday talk to that. I believe Granite, because of their investment, I think they got a 50-year, 40 or 50-year permit. Most others have a 10-year permit, and I can tell you, just going through time extension, that they'd better start after about the seventh or eighth year, because it, with the changes in, in requirements, if you haven't been out to- changes in, in requirements, if you haven't been out to Mission Rock Road lately, you will see a completely brand-new paved road. It's all private, it's all maintained and all put in place by the Property Owners Association. So as the, working with Becky, you have a hundred-page staff report. I think the, the violations, to me, were really kind of minor. They, basically, that yes, they put a, a trailer on there and they probably should have gotten a permit. The others stacking materials, sometimes with new technologies, you end up doing a couple of things that maybe you don't want to or that the county staff doesn't want you to. So that's all going to be rectified with this. And so if you have any questions for me on that process, I'd be glad to answer it or I can let Mr. Monday answer any specific questions on the operation. Thank you.
Questions, Commissioners?
I just have one. Since we have been presented with a new modification to condition thirteen, I need to know if you accept that.
Yes, that's acceptable. All the conditions are acceptable to us.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you very much. I have no other speaker cards, so I'm assuming no one's speaking in favor or is opposed to this project. And I don't, we don't need a rebuttal because there's been no opposition. Any closing comments from staff, Becky? All right? In that, in that point, I'd like to close the public hearing and we will deliberate. What is your pleasure, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, since there's no other discussion except for the, the extension of the CUP, since we've had multiple conversations on multiple CUPs in that regard, at the same time, I'm in favor of obviously giving the planning director the discretion since with the thirty-year CUP, it'll be ninety-two, so I don't want to be sitting here hearing it again. What I'd like to do then is to, first of all, make a motion to accept Exhibit Fourteen for the modification to condition thirteen, but also on condition three B, to continue the planning director's discretion on extension, but to limit it to no longer than five years. With that, I move for the approval of the staff recommended actions on page twenty-nine.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to get further discussion first.
Certainly. Go ahead, Commissioner Onsak.
I would like to hear from the planning director regarding the length of the CUP. It seems to be an issue here. The number picked, why do you think it's in the best interest to utilize that number?
Why the thirty-year versus any other period of time? I mean, we do take a look at the past history of the site, the violations of the, you know, the importance of the violation, the investment within the property. There's a lot of things that go into it, but as I've told your, your planning commission the last two times that we've met, there is a major review of extension and, and permit expiration times happening in the planning department right now, where we're really going to try to apply some, some specific criteria. So the ones that are coming in, in the interim in these next few months, we're simply trying to, you know, take a look at the reasonableness, the investment of it and, and, and what the applicant has asked for, the surrounding property uses, and bringing back what we think is a reasonable number for, for that type of permit.
Does it concern you, the rapid change in technology may, may make what we've approved here obsolete in a few years?
No, because they could come back and modify their permit at, at any time to accommodate any new uses or any new technology on the project.
Thank you.
Bishop Rodriguez?
On your last comment, bringing it, bringing the permit back to, for modification, would that be driven by, by this office, your office, or would that be, how would that occur?
No, the, the project would stay as it is now, within the conditions that it is now, until it does not, no longer work for the applicant. So the only time that the planning department would come back and do a modification of the permit is if we intended to modify it for reasons such as enforcement or if we decided to revoke the permit for lack of enforcement or, or lack of compliance with their conditions. So typically, a modification is brought on by the applicant.
Would change of ownership cause it to come back under review?
There's probably a condition in the permit somewhere. There, there usually is. It says that the planning department just needs to be notified within ten days of a date of ownership because, as you know, permit entitlements run with the land, not with the owner. So we usually, for a change of ownership, we, we need to acknowledge who that person is, they need to write to the planning director within ten days, and they need to reestablish a new, Ben points out to me, condition seventeen on page eighty-five addresses that issue.
Thank you. We have a motion with some amendments that has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just quickly, the reason I feel comfortable just saying that is the level of monitoring by multiple agencies, particularly the Regional Water Quality District, as far as the monitoring and scheduling. We've had several other entities and that's the bigger dog. And if they were to violate those, that would then trigger us being able to step back in. As far as the advanced technology, again, those are, the output standards are set by others than us. So as long as they're able to meet that more efficiently with different technology, again, that would be up to the applicant. But I feel comfortable that those agencies, the multiple agencies out there that monitor the quality of the output, which I know is a concern of yours, I feel comfortable with that. And obviously, if the applicant feels that they can do it more efficiently at a lower cost, they'd make that investment. So I think the thirty-year in this particular situation allows them that reasonableness because they're monitored by the other agencies. I do feel that it should not, that's why I went with a five-year for the planning director. So there is some limit at some point in time by this, this government.
With all the monitoring that, that will be occurring, I also assume if there is a violation, in the worst-case case situation, if there's a spillage, it creates a hazardous situation that through that monitoring process, planning would be notified and appropriate action would be taken.
No more discussion? All in favor of the proposed motion signify playing aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carried. We have a few more seats now might be available for people coming in. The next, the next item on the agenda is Agenda Item Eight, LU-0906, zero-zero-six-two and LU-090066. Rabbi Shlomo Bestritzky, Shabbat of Oak Park is the applicant. This is a request for approval of a major modification, LU-090062 of CUP four-eight-four-eight, Jewish Community Synagogue known as Shabbat of Oak Park, to extend the permit for twenty years and increase maximum occupancy from seventy to one-hundred-and-forty-five people and variance number LU-090066 to reduce the required rear yard setback. Before we have the staff report, I want to go over a few rules, I guess, that we have for hearings so that we all understand. This is an emotional issue, understandably, and so first of all, please be certain that all cell phones and pages are turned off. Secondly, if you wish to speak, you should have filled out a speaker card. If you wish a comment not to speak, fill out an orange card. And congratulations to all of you for not all wanting to speak or we have to bring in, bring in bunks for this evening. And the card should be checked for or against. Thirdly, I will call a speaker and the next speaker. There's a blank chair right in the front row, so when I call for the speaker, would the speaker come up? And when I say, "Speaking next," would that person come up and sit in that chair? This saves a lot of time with people going across the aisles and coming down. So the speaker will speak, the next speaker will sit in the chair, and we'll continue to do that rotation. Please state your name and address before you speak. With the number of speakers we have, the limit of speakers will be three minutes. We have a timer which you can see. When you start speaking, a green light will come on, then a yellow light, you should be summing up, and then at the end of three minutes, stop. Also, if you agree with the previous speaker and you agree with what they've said, it's not necessarily that you constantly repeat it. We received about a, over, at least way over a hundred emails, which we've, which we received by our own email, and we have read those, so we know your feelings and comments and on those cards. So please don't read anything to us that we've already received. You can just say, "I agree with the last speaker," so forth. And please, let's keep proper decorum, no clapping, outbursts, or cheering. This is a formal hearing. We want you, we want to hear you. This is for you to let us know what your feelings are, and we want that to be done in the most efficient and orderly means possible. Cards will be basically called up in the order that we receive them or any priority that the speakers wished. Now for the more confusing item. The applicant requested an increase from seventy to one-hundred-and-forty-five people and the approval of a variance. That's what your applicant requested. That's not what the planning department is recommending. So many of you filled out these cards. I'm assuming you are supporting the application and not necessarily the recommendations. Don't worry about that. That's not going to be important at this point. I pretty much know what the feelings are, so I'm not going to consider all these people supporting the recommended action when you haven't heard what it is yet. And it's not one-hundred-and-forty-five or it's not a variance. So please listen carefully to that. If after that, you filled out one of these cards and you still want to speak, we'll take a break, and you may fill out a white card, and then you will be able to speak if you are against the recommendations of the planning department. I hope that's, I hope that's clear. In that case, I'd like to have the presentation of the staff report on this item. And the, the presenter is Andrea. Good morning, Andrea.
Good morning. I'm Andrea Ozde. I'm the case planner for the Habad project. The project number is LU-090062, which is a major, major modification to CUP forty-eight-four-eight for a Jewish community synagogue known as Habad of Oak Park. The second part of the request is LU-090066, which is a variance to reduce the rear yard setback. Before we begin, I just wanted to provide a couple of clarifications and of terms that we're going to be using throughout this hearing, just because we may not all be familiar with some of the concepts that, that we'll be discussing. The first one is the Habad. That is a Jewish organization that is not necessarily a venue, but it's an organization. Jews can come together to have religious services, and it's also a cultural and a, a social environment for, for Jews. The Shtiibul is the actual location, the venue where often services are held. This is often in a residential community within walking distance ideally, simply because Orthodox Jews, they would prefer to drive, or prefer to walk. Driving is, is not permitted, although at a location like this, Habad, the Shtiibul, is open to Jews of, of all levels of observance, so there may be a few or more who, who wish to drive to the, the location. Shabbat is the, the day of rest, the Jewish day of rest, the Sabbath. It begins in the evening. A Jewish day ends and begins in the evening, so sundown is that, that moment where the day changes. So that's why many of the services are, are at sundown, which is changing throughout the year. So that's why we weren't able to, to create conditions that necessarily had a, a time. They, they begin at sundown, and then there are time limits that go beyond that, and you'll see that's one or two hours depending on what the, our chart shows. This is the location of the Shtiibul, is at five-nine-nine-eight Conifer in Oak Park. It's about a quarter of a mile from the intersection of Conifer and Canaan Road, is north of the city of Agoura Hills, and it's approximately eight-hundred feet from the Oak Park Unified School District, which is where people who drive to the Shtiibul would park. Within the community, you can see that Medea Creek runs directly west of the, the location, and there's also a vegetated, densely vegetated area up to the south. Both of those areas are owned by the Ranches Thimi Parks and Rec District. The east side of the, the property is shared with two neighboring residences, and those are the, the only two residences that have adjoining property line. The history of this site is that the Habad of Oak Park moved their facility here in nineteen ninety-four. They received the conditional use permit number forty-eight-four-eight to legalize the religious worship use at this site. The limitations were for seventy people maximum during Friday evening, Saturday morning, and Saturday evening Shabbat services, and also for holiday services for fifteen of the Jewish holidays. For air, or for times that were not during those that I just mentioned, there was an allowance of thirty people maximum for religious study sessions during those remaining hours. And part of the, the application included the, the parking agreement with Oak Park Unified School District. There have been several modifications since nineteen ninety-four. There were two time extensions for the five-year increments, and also there were a couple of other changes that were made throughout. One was about a thousand-square-foot expansion and also construction of a mikvah, which is the religious bath. And due to modesty issues, the thirty people maximum that had been previously approved for, for areas outside Shabbat and holidays was then also reduced to accommodate the mikvah. There has been a history, there's a, a violation for exceeding permit allowances and also the unpermitted patio enclosure, and that is part of the, the request here today, the variance to legalize that, that structure. The current proposal is shown in Figure Three of the staff report, that is page one-twenty-four of your packet. It includes a twenty-year time extension request, an increase for the maximum number of people to one-hundred-and-forty-five during Saturday morning Shabbat and Saturday morning holiday services, a maximum of forty people during Friday evening, Saturday evening Shabbat services and holiday services, and for Sunday morning get-togethers. And for the remaining time, there would be a maximum request of ten people for study sessions, meetings, and tours, and also use of the mikvah. The request used to include an elimination of condition twenty-two for that, that very first permit that was approved in nineteen ninety-four. There's condition number twenty-two, which required a bond, a five-hundred-dollar bond to ensure that the, the structure would be restored to a single-family dwelling should the use ever go away. And the applicant initially wanted to remove that condition and since has decided to withdraw that request and leave the condition in due to some confusion and just at the municipal advisory committee meeting, there was some confusion there and they decided to just leave that in and not have to worry about that. However, planning has decided that we will not carry through or not recommending carrying through that condition. We have the Civil Administrative Penalties Program, and we don't believe that that five-hundred-dollar bond would be the, the mechanism to ensure that the structure would be reverted back to a single-family dwelling. So we feel like even without that condition, we have what we need in order to enforce that requirement. And they're also proposing to continue keeping the, the parking facility at the Oak Park Unified School District, and there would be some changes to that. There would be an, an actual formal shared parking agreement, which does not exist right now. There would be numbered spaces and signage that would ensure that those spaces are actually This is a picture from across the street. You can see the, the Shtiibul in the very back of the photo. There's a, a small area that I've just pulled out there that I've highlighted to show that I've highlighted to show the, the parking sign that currently isn't used to direct any people who are driving over to the OPUSD facility. The parcel fronts on Conifer. It's a converted single-family dwelling that retains its, its visual appearance as a single-family home. There are four spaces that can be used for parking onsite. Two of those spaces are, are used in the picture. And there would be two more cars that could fit behind. And just barely, you can see it, but on the, the right side of the picture is one of the pathways for the Medea Creek hiking trail. This is a close-up of the, the eastern property line, the only property line that the Shtible shares with the two neighbors. That two-story building in the, the back on the left, that's the second house. That's not the one on the corner. And there's one more on the corner. This is a view from across Medea Creek, from Conifer Street. So you can, you can see the house. And you can also see the, the patio enclosure where the arrow is pointing. These views are, are from the site, from the rear yard. The wall that you see at the bottom is the, the wall that's within the property line. And it looks out over that vegetated area. And then Medea Creek is the other, other photo. This is the existing and the proposed parking lot. And this slide is supposed to show you the, just the location and how everything is sited there, and how it's used practically. So the purple outlined area is the, the project site. And then you can see Medea Creek running down the, the center there. And then the red outlined area is the Oak Park Unified School District. And that's the full property. That's not just the parking lot. There's also a field that is used by, by soccer and softball groups also on the weekend. So that is another reason for that shared parking agreement requirement. It's about eight hundred feet away from the, the Shtible. This is the path of travel for any cars, any vehicles that would be parking at the OPUSD facility. There are two entrances, one along Conifer and one along Medea Creek. And the area that's within that bubble would be approximately where those, those parking spaces that would be used by the Shtible would be located. So they would try to, to use the ones that would, were closest to the, the street. This aerial photograph is the best one that we have that demonstrates what the variance request is. The, that light-colored roof area is where the patio enclosure is. And it, it hugs right to the, the rear property line where the OP, or where the Medea Creek hiking trail and vegetated area is to the, the back. It was constructed without permits. And it was partially within the fifteen-foot rear yard setback area. And the applicant is requesting a variance to reduce the rear yard setback from fifteen feet to six foot three inches as a first step to legalizing the structure. Another couple of views. One, the circled area is just to highlight where the, the patio enclosure is behind that tree. And then the hiking trail, which would be the, the public area where the patio enclosure would be visible from. This is the floor plan of the structure. We have the, the prayer area in the center. It's about a thousand square feet. Nursery, kitchen, and also the, the mikvah bath. The highlighted area in orange is the patio enclosure. That is the, the subject of the variance request. Now, I just want to point out that it's not the entire orange area that's within the rear setback. It's about two-thirds of that structure. The, the lower two-thirds of the structure is, is within the rear yard setback.
Andrea, real quick, when you say two-thirds of that, is that the length or the width?
It is the width. So the, the longer area, the bottom of the screen is the, the rear property line. So move up two-thirds of, of it from there, yeah.
Towards the building?
Right.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more question. So do you, do you have specific dimensions on the size of that enclosure?
I do, but I don't
I don't remember seeing it.
Know them. I can look that up, real quick.
You don't have to do it now, maybe, maybe later on.
Again, the patio enclosure is shown in the, the red circle and rectangle from the various views from the site. This is from within the patio enclosure, looking over toward Medea Creek. This is the approximately thousand-square-foot prayer room area. And the four French doors lead out to the patio enclosure. And the patio enclosure is about the same width as what those French doors are. So it doesn't extend too far on either side of the, the window, doored area. More views from the back. The first one is from the rear property line, where that wall is. And the, the property line is actually a little bit closer to the building than where the wall is. And the bottom is just demonstrating the, about two-thirds area that's within the setbacks. It's not the entire area. More views for the variance, so that you can see what the, the situation is out there and the potential impact to neighbors. The, the two-story building in the back is the, the closest neighbor. This is the site plan for the OPUSD parking facility. There are seventy-one spaces out there. And there would be twenty-seven or twenty-eight that would be needed by the Habad. And the twenty-seven or twenty-eight is, I'm distinguishing those two numbers just because it all depends on whether you approve the variance or not. So that the parking requirements are based on square footage, the area of the structure. And the variance, if approved, would tip it over to that requirement for the extra space. And the Habad is an assembly use, according to our zoning ordinance. And the parking requirements for that are listed in the parking ordinance. I can go over that later with you if you would like. So you can see exactly how the, the math worked out. On-street parking is not considered to be sufficient for this project. And the reason for that is that it is public parking available to anybody. And we cannot enforce that, which means that we cannot enforce that those spaces would be available for people coming for Habad services. So our calculation came out to thirty-nine or forty spaces originally. However, the applicant contended that those spaces would not be required. Most of the people actually do walk to the Shtible. So they wanted to see if they could get a reduction of the number of spaces. The parking study was performed by Interwest Consulting Group. And came out that thirteen spaces were needed at any given time throughout the Sunday, or Saturday morning services on two separate dates that, that occurred. So the thirteen spaces was not the number that we used. The, the parking study was just a mechanism for the applicant to reduce the number of parking spaces. We were able to reduce that number by twenty percent per the parking code. That's where we came up with the thirty-one or thirty-two spaces. And then the four spaces onsite reduced the number at the OPUSD facility to twenty-seven or twenty-eight. I know that's a lot of numbers, but I can, I can go over that again if you need to.
Andrea, did you say that those spaces, there would be a sign up there for Saturday? So when those spaces would be reserved for the Habad?
Yes, there would be temporary signs. That's what we're proposing, to have those there during the hours, that they would need to be reserved for the Habad. And then that sign that you saw at the, the actual site, the project location that's being used now, would continue to be used. And also the, the traffic engineer who prepared that study is, is here to answer any questions about how the rates were, were calculated. This is the, the notice area. Anybody who was within that blue area received a notice of the public hearing, as well as a notice of the environmental document. And there were some other people who were interested as well. So they were added to my list, and they're not shown here. But they also did receive notice of, of both of those items. There are plenty of phone calls. I received a handful of phone calls about the project. But the majority of the comments came via email and via mail, regular US mail. And there are about a dozen comments that came in opposition. And the, the opposition was mainly concerned with, with parking. That was the, the number one in the neighborhood, that the spaces in the neighborhood were being used because they are closer to the, the site than the OPUSD lot. Noise. And that we have dealt with by, by making sure that all activities take place within the facility. So that not outside in the, either yard, just within the facility. And that eliminates the, the noise issue. And also that many of the, the opposition, the letters in opposition were in opposition to the variance. And many of those comments also expressed the desire for Habad to stay in Oak Park at that location, but just for it not to grow beyond what it has right now. We received, like you said, many, many comments in support of the project that have been, been coming in recently. And what most of those comments say, as, as you read, is that people walk to the facility. If they don't walk, they drive and they park in the lot. And, you know, this is part of the, the natural growth of the, the community. So they wish to remain there in Oak Park. And many people have moved to Oak Park because they knew that this location was there, that Habad of Oak Park was available to them. That was very important in their decision-making to move into the community. The environmental document was circulated for review. We received only, only two comments on that. And the comments were regarding parking. For the most part, that the, the study occurred when other user groups, like the soccer and softball groups, were not there. So therefore, there would be more parking available. And it would not create a problem that would be visible in, in creating the, the parking study. And also that the, the dates that were chosen were, were not good dates because they were near Christmas and New Year. Another comment was that the, the parking study is flawed because attendees were aware that the study was taking place. So therefore, typical actions would be modified based on knowing that they were being watched. And also that the data and the assumptions made in the study were not conservative enough to be realistic and to be able to be applied universally to this project. Now, the parking study is considered the best available data that, that we have. So we, we didn't receive anything that would cause us to re-review that study and, and question the contents of it. Just a quick summary of what happened at the Municipal Advisory Council meeting in April. For the most part, the MAC approved what the Habad was asking for. There were a few changes that they did ask for. One is that the maximum number be one hundred and twenty-seven, not one hundred and forty-five. They did not want the, the Sunday morning activities to be up to forty people. And they, they wanted the bond to be, or not to be eliminated. They wanted to keep that bond in place. And I think there is one other item there. And I think they wanted the, the approval just for ten years. All five variance standards need to be met. Those findings need to be made in order for you to approve the variance. And I'd like to go through them one by one, so we can see what our logic was and what the applicant's contentions were. The first variance finding is special circumstances or exceptional characteristics with regard to size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, which do not apply generally to comparable properties in the same vicinity and zone. The applicant stated that distances to other structures and proximity to the, the park district area were unique features of this site, and therefore helped warrant that variance. Our response is that the structure does not require, or the parcel does not require a variance to accommodate reasonable use of the property. It was built as a single-family home, just as all other lots in the neighborhood were. It just happens to be set back a little bit further from the front property line, and therefore closer to the rear, than would be ideal for adding that patio closure in the back. There are dozens of properties in the community that also abut the, the park district area. So that we do not feel is a, a special component of this site. And also that distance between the structure and neighboring properties is not a consideration in granting a variance for the rear yard setback. The second standard is that granting the variance will not confer a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the same vicinity and zone. The applicant says that the location and orientation is dissimilar to those found around the neighborhood. And that there are two other community churches that are located in, in residential areas. Our response to that is that neighboring uses are not factors in determining necessary setbacks, that the two churches are actually on much larger parcels. They're each many acres in size. And they, therefore, that they do not, that does not contribute to the need for a variance. And also that this property is larger than the, the rest of the neighborhood parcels. Not by that much, but by enough that this is not in need of a special variance. The third standard is that strict application of the zoning regulations as they apply to the subject property will result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships inconsistent with the general purpose of such regulations. The applicant says that the existence and the quality of the structure, it's, it's there already. That should be given consideration in granting the variance. And that demolishing it would be costly, it would be very expensive. And it would, it doesn't make sense at this point to remove it simply for the, the reason of the setback. Planning's response is that we do not promote after-the-fact legalization of a structure just because it's, it's there already. And that the cost and inconvenience is self-imposed and, and would have been avoided had the applicant requested that before constructing it. Standard four is that granting the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare, nor to the use, enjoyment, or valuation of neighboring properties. The applicant says that the, the patio enclosure is actually a, a noise barrier and is positive for neighborhood, the neighborhood. And it's better for everybody involved to have it there. And it, it eliminates that open backyard environment that would create a problem for neighbors. Planning's response is that landowners have a reasonable expectation that the surrounding properties will be developed consistently with codes. And that intrusions into required setbacks and overdevelopment of the subject property may result in impacts to neighboring properties with respect to public health, safety, general welfare, use, enjoyment, or valuation. The fifth standard, having to do with hazardous waste facilities, does not apply to this project. I just have the permit approval standards up here for you to take a look at. And I'm just going to summarize here that the, the CUP for the assembly use is consistent with the intent and provisions of the county's general plan, area plan, and also the zoning ordinance. Neighboring properties are of the same designations as the, this property is. This is actually a little larger, like I told you. It's at ten thousand square feet in a neighborhood of about seven to eight thousand square foot properties. The subject has two bordering residential neighbors and shares the eastern property line with the rear property lines of those neighboring lots. And if the use expires there or goes away, then it would need to be restored. The structure would need to be restored to its original use as a single-family home. Two-car covered parking and access to, internal access to a full restroom would need to be provided. According to our recommendations, the Habad must provide off-site parking as required by Section 8108-331 of the Non-Cosal Zoning Ordinance, maintained for the exclusive use of Habad. And that that would need to be in place whenever ten, or whenever eleven or more people are in attendance. The improved signage at the site and numbering of, of spaces would also contribute and, and make that more feasible. The primary use of the parking lot is for the school district during regular school hours. And other uses can, can come in there during the off-hours, which is what soccer and softball and Habad have done. And they're not for the, currently, for the exclusive use of Habad. But those changes that we've made here, we believe will improve the situation that they have currently and will make that compatible with the neighborhood. The parking ordinance provides flexibility pursuant to Section 8108-2 and gives us the general authority to waive or modify parking agreements. And that is the section that we are using to, to state that no restrictive covenant would be needed on the OPUSD facility. We have a shared parking agreement. It's a permanent public lot. That is very unlikely to go away at any time in the future. So we believe that that is, that contributes to the need to not have a restrictive covenant. And also that the temporary signage will be sufficient to be used there during the times that Habad will actually be using the site. And the final area of flexibility is for the, the parking lot to be up to eight hundred feet away from the, the property. And our code states that it should be five hundred, but we are recommending that there be flexibility on that as well. The planning division believes that removal of the seven hundred and fifty-square-foot patio enclosure, combined with the proposed increase in maximum attendance at the facility, would result in overflow of religious activities into outdoor areas of the property. of religious activities into outdoor areas of the property. So that is why we've made the recommendations that we have that is not consistent with the applicant's proposal. We've also proposed that the permit duration be for a 10-year period, with opportunity for a minor modification after 10 years, and then changes after that. Any modification would be pursuant to what the planning director determines at that time is necessary. So we believe that this would result in noise, and that leaving the proposal as is, as our recommended action, that that would result in noise and privacy intrusions beyond what would typically occur for a single-family neighborhood like this one. And therefore, the increase in attendance would be incompatible with the neighborhood. So therefore, the planning division is recommending that there be a maximum number of 70 people for services on Friday evening, Saturday during the day, and Saturday evening. A maximum of 70 people for morning and evening holiday services, and a maximum of 10 people during all other times. There'd be no changes to the proposed hours of operation and the parking requirements that are outlined in the proposed project description, which is Figure 5 of your staff report. The project conditions imposed by the planning division to address capacity, noise, parking, hours of operation, and procedures for resolving conflict are all designed to lessen or eliminate any noxious land use. And therefore, no additional parking demands will be made on Conifer or the neighboring residential streets. With the imposition and the applicant's full compliance with these project-specific conditions, the development of this project will be compatible with the character of the neighborhood and potential land uses in the area will not be obnoxious, harmful, or impair the utility of neighboring properties or uses, and will not be detrimental to the public interest, safety, convenience, or welfare. And so, to conclude, I'm going to read the recommended actions of the planning division, which begin on page 136. And they are to find, on the basis of the negative declaration, including the initial study attached thereto, and any public comments received on that SEQA document, that there is no substantial evidence on the basis of the whole record before it that the project will have a significant effect on the environment, to certify that your commission has read and considered the information contained therein, and that it reflects the independent judgment of the county, and approve and adopt the negative declaration as meeting the requirements of SEQA. Find, based on the evidence presented in the staff report and at the hearing, that with the planning division's recommended modifications to the proposed project description, the permit approval standards in County Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance Section 8111-1.2.1.1 are met. Find, based on the evidence presented in the staff report and at the hearing, that the variance standards in County Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance Section 8111-1.2.2.2 cannot be met. Adopt a resolution adopting the proposed permit findings in County Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance Section 8111-1.2.1.1, and approve major modification number LU090062 to conditional use permit number 4848, subject to the revised attached conditions, which I'll show you in a second, and adopting the proposed variance findings in County Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance Section 8111-1.2.2.2, and deny variance number LU090066. And finally, designate the clerk of the planning commission at 800 South Victoria Avenue as the custodian and location of the record of the proceeding upon which the decision is based. You received a memo at the start of this hearing, which outlines some of the changes that we had in the staff report and in the conditions. Most of those are just quick clarifications and typos that I don't think I need to go into unless you'd like to discuss them. But there are two that I do want to give a little more background on. One is Condition 11, and that condition was replaced due to inapplicability to this project. That is a standard condition that is typically applied to mining permits. However, we're in the midst of making major overhaul changes to our standard conditions, so this one slipped in. The new condition, we'll read, in case of any failure by the permutee to comply with any term or condition of the CUP, the provisions of Section 8111-6.2 of the Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance, modification, suspension, and revocation for cause will apply, and that any decision to suspend or revoke the CUP shall be made in a noticed public hearing before the county decision-maker having final authority to grant this permit. The other change that I wanted to point out was on the last page, Condition 14, and that is a replacement of the condition that was shown in your draft staff report. And this is identical to the change that you saw for the last item with Becky Linder's case. So this is a standard condition that we are proposing to change here. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. The applicant is here to answer any questions as well, and I think would like to speak. The applicant's representative and also the traffic engineer who prepared the parking study.
Thank you. Before we go for questions, I'd like the planning commissioners to state their disclosures. I read the disclosure note, and it still applies to this. Do you have any disclosures, Commissioner Allen?
No, sir.
No disclosures?
I'm familiar with the site only because many, many years ago, I used to work the area. I'm also acquainted with, I believe, the applicant's presenter, John Newton. Beyond that, I've read some personal literature, book-type.
Mr. Chair, I need to amend it. Thank you for reminding me. I know the applicant representative, John Newton, he and I sat on the Moore Park Boys and Girls Club board in the 1990s. John no longer sits on the board in the last 10 or so-plus years.
My disclosures, again, are the two articles that were written in the Star about this project. Any questions for Andrea?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
First of all, as far as the use and the volume and traffic and the parking, as far as the soccer and softball, is that under the county's purview or the parking regs?
You mean, are the other uses regulated by the county?
One of the conflicts I'm seeing is on Saturday morning, the softball, the soccer, and obviously the services. But since we can regulate this, we do not have the power to regulate that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. The second question is, the amended changes that you provided, remember, have they been provided to the applicant or applicant's representative yet this morning?
Yes, over the phone yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Allen, stop.
Right. There's an existing agreement that has been replaced over the years on a yearly basis. Annually, there's been the update provided by the school board for whatever the upcoming dates are, since the Jewish holidays are not always, they don't always fall on the same date. So those are changed each year and applied for. The historical parking agreement has been just a copy of that application form with the dates in there that are included. And based on the hearing that we're having today, the current form would have expired by then. But rather than approve an entire new one for the upcoming year, they wanted to continue with a temporary, a month-to-month one, like you said, so that we could wait, see what happens at this hearing, and then modify the agreement at that point for the future.
Did the month-to-month agreement guarantee a specific number of spaces?
I don't think it did. I think, well, the historical shared agreement, or the agreement that they've had, did not guarantee any spaces, and either had written in there or had implied, been assumed over the years to mean 35 spaces.
Does your proposed condition incorporate a requirement in the agreement that they have a specified number of spaces?
Yes.
And has the school district, depending on the outcome here, have they, have we have any indication that they're willing to do that?
They're prepared to do that.
Nothing further. Commissioner Rodriguez, any questions?
Yeah, I do, but I'll hold them until later time. I'm sure I'll have some more.
I have a few questions. You say they're on a month-to-month, I mean, that's for the parking. When does the current CUP expire?
It would have expired in October of last year. However, the application for this modification came in in May of last year, and so that expiration did not take place.
And for the benefits of the commission and people out here, could you state the major differences between the applicant's application and the staff recommendation? I know you've done it there for the number of people. So any other things that are the major differences between the application and staff recommendation?
The applicant requested a 20-year time extension. We're proposing 10 years with another 10 after a minor modification. The maximum capacity that they had requested was 145 during certain times, 40 during other times, and 10 during the remaining times. And we have boiled that down to just 2 to 70, and 10. So if it's not 70, it's 10. There's always going to be a, there's a minimum, the lowest amount that they could have would be 10, and they would still be in compliance. Does that help?
The parking, there's no difference in the parking?
There's no difference in the parking.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Andrea. Now, we're going to have a presentation by the applicant, and I'm going to call up the next speaker who will speak after. The applicant can have more than three minutes. And the first speaker I have as the applicant is Rabbi Bistrzky. I hope I pronounced that correct. I'm sorry, I guess someone else is going to make the presentation in behalf of the
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One other comment in regards to declarations. I happen to know that Mr. Newton was going to make the application because he and I met at a social event approximately a week ago, and it came up in very brief conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. State your name and address, please.
Yes, John Newton, 5152 North Commerce Avenue, Moore Park, California, representing the applicant. Our presentation is actually in three parts. I will start it off. Rabbi Shlomo Bistrzky will follow me with some discussion of how he operates the facility. And then Mark Wessel, the traffic engineer, will briefly address you regarding the traffic study, or the parking study. Also in attendance, we have our civil engineer, who conducted a survey and calculations, and would be the person who would do the structural and building and safety plans should the enclosed patio be allowed to stay. That is Dan Holmes. He's in the audience as well, if you have any questions regarding the site plan, or measurements, or things of that nature.
Mr. Newton, excuse me for, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I want to state again what I have stated before, that we're going to take the speaker cards I have in favor of the CUP and the applications. We'll hear from all of these people first, then we'll take a break.
Yes.
And any other people who filled out one of these, and who has heard the speakers, and has something additional can say, at that break, they may fill out a speaker card.
Okay.
Then after that, we will hear the people who are opposed to the CUP. Sorry for the interruption. I want to make that clear again.
That's fine. And it's good that you repeat that. And in front of you, you have, the applicant's presentation is in three cards, 1, 2, 3. So that's all I was referring to.
I've got the first two, and then it drops to 15. Let me see if I can find the third. That's okay. The third person can just come up. I have, no, I have, I don't have your card, but I have Rabbi Bistrzky. And then next, I have, bring up any three you want.
Chairman Malatour, members of the commission, John Newton again. The first thing I'd like to do is just touch on a couple of things in the staff report. Andrea has covered them in detail, and I want to make sure we are on the same page. At the bottom of page, well, I'm going to use the handwritten page numbers, because otherwise we get lost. 117, part of our request under 2B, 40 persons on site, any one time for the following activities, Friday evening services beginning at sundown, and lasting one to two hours, was part of our application. And on the next page, 118, the same thing, subitem 2, Saturday evening services beginning at sundown and lasting for one to two hours. And then the item, subitem parenthetical 3, Sunday morning services. After the municipal advisory committee hearing where there was considerable confusion about what Sunday morning services were all about, it became important for us to clarify to staff and to others, this is actually a men and young men's fellowship breakfast on Sunday morning. So it's not the typical services. I just want to clarify that term services is a men's fellowship breakfast on a Sunday morning. On page 119, and it directly relates to page 127. Page 119, the top of paragraph 2, there's a comment, "The project parcel is similar in size to all other residential parcels within the immediate neighborhood as it was originally created and developed as part of the residential subdivision." That's not correct. Andrea and I talked about it, and she agrees. The statement on page 127 is more correct. Paragraph 2, the third line, "The subject property is unique only in that it was subdivided and developed separately from the surrounding tract, and is the only property within its immediate area that fronts Conifer Street." That's the more correct answer. "The tract was recorded and began development in 1976." This was a, there was a large remainder parcel that was essentially open space, maybe 97 feet wide and 400 feet deep. In a subsequent action involving the Rancho Seminary Recreation and Park District, a lotline adjustment was accomplished, creating this parcel, the only one that fronts Conifer, and giving the balance of that property to the rear, to the Recreation and Park District for development of Medea Creek Park and Trails system. That happened in 1983. So this parcel, this is the beginning of part of my discussion, that it is unique, it's different, it isn't a typical residential subdivided lot.
Mr. Newton, I just want to say also that that correction had been made, and that is in the planning commission's addenda item, page 3, staff report, paragraph 2. That is one of the things that's on your plate that you're looking at. That second paragraph, as it was originally created and developed as part of a residential subdivision, has been deleted.
Thank you very much. I thought so. I didn't hear it in the presentation. All right. And page 126, there begins the discussion. And later in the report is an attachment from our original application that talks about the findings of the variance and our original justification for the findings of the variance. Today, I'm going to elaborate and clarify and correct distances of the original presentation, because we know, and we have better information now, and I need to expand our discussion about why the variance, hopefully, you'll be able to find, is appropriate. On page, let me see if there's any more in the staff report. Page 136, jurisdictional comments. This is a recitation of what the municipal advisory council, the neighbors' own advisory body, who advises the supervisor, county supervisor in that district, the people that live there, what their recommendation was. And on about five or six lines down, it again mentions Sunday morning services. And it was confusing that evening, and we were not able to clarify that night. We subsequently did, that it's the Sunday morning activity is a men's and young men's fellowship breakfast. And finally, on page 137, hopefully, at the end of all of this, you'll be able to find a basis and support to approve the variance versus the recommendation to deny. Moving into the conditions, the proposed conditions, I know this has been corrected, there's been a change on Condition 1, referencing the site plan and floor plan and elevations and something of that nature, because that seemed to be missing. On page 139, in that particular matrix, we're hoping we'll get to a point that, at the top of the matrix, where you see Friday PM and Saturday PM, consistent with top of the matrix, where you see Friday PM and Saturday PM, consistent with my earlier comment, that it would be sundown plus up to 2 hours on the top line. Down on the page, the condition number 1, there's, "Parking for all events and uses would not occur on neighborhood streets in the vicinity of the facility. Parking would be provided at a nearby school through an agreement with the Oak Park Unified School District." This has been the case since 1994, when this CUP was originally granted. However, it is a little bit difficult, because you probably have experiences in your, your neighborhoods. I have experiences in mine. There's a Methodist church in our, our particular area that's been in operation for about 50 years. They utilize street side parking, on-street parking, and they utilize the next-door Flori School parking lot. It's been going on for a long time. Neighbors don't have a problem, they're used to having a lot of cars on Sunday mornings, and it's very typical. Different, in this case, all of the parking, any parking that is required or generated by the operation, has to go to the school district. And I only say that because there's nothing illegal about parking on the neighborhood streets. It's by virtue of agreement and conditions, we don't. Let me see here, I'm still in the conditions. Page 146, parking signage, I believe, and it's probably in your, in your memo, I just haven't seen it, about five or six lines down, in sub D, the words "Saturday morning" were struck, I believe, for clarification. And I've, I've clarified with staff that the sub F, bicycle parking, that is to be onsite at the Habad facility. We agree on page 147 with the change to condition 14. Page 148, condition 17B, one of the things we'll request is that you delete that. There are no such homeowners association rules for this tract. This only serves, in our opinion, this only serves to be a vehicle to cause a violation if an inadvertent error by a congregant voluntarily leaves cans out overnight, or unintentionally puts them out early. We need the same rules, voluntary compliance as everyone else, not punitive regulation for one incident. We have an incident that occurred, one of the rabbis, I'm sure, will talk about it, he is the rabbi that was notified of trashcans being left out, or put out early, or left out, I'm not sure what the circumstances were, and he personally went over and removed them. Unfortunately, a picture was taken of that, and it showed up a number of times over this period since 2008, that you'll hear some discussion about. So it appears this has happened more than, it's been one incident, and it keeps getting repeated, and I, we're just feeling the condition is inappropriate in light of all of the other neighbors who voluntarily handle their trash. On page 149, that is condition 19B that's following over to 149, "If, at the end of all of this, you find ultimately that you cannot support the variance, and the patio enclosure has to be removed, we must be allowed to utilize the rear patio for luncheon sociales and casual meetings. There would be a patio deck, that's not an encroachment, and patio furniture is not an encroachment, and we would request, if you cannot support the variance to keep the enclosure, that 19B be struck. We need to be able to use the outside." All right, that's, that's it on the staff report and the conditions. I'd like to now pass a handout to you and go over our, the details of my presentation. All right. Excuse me. Oh, I guess they're stamping them. How wait until you have them?
She just has to indicate how they can be recorded.
Shall I continue, Mr. Chairman? All right. I'm going to go over this in detail, because especially the variance part is very important. But the request is to extend the permit for 20 years. This avoids costly and repetitive five-year renewals. The county conducts full compliance review of conditional instruments every three years. Any non-compliance complaint is pursued aggressively by the county. No need to accomplish and verify compliance by way of the renewal process. A new required events report, condition 12E, you've probably seen in your report, is now required annually each September 1st, covering every Saturday and all holiday services, verifying compliance again. Effectively, we will be under annual compliance review. So therefore, we're requesting the 20-year time period, and have no objection to the way that staff has crafted it, that at the 10-year point, the planning director looks to ensure we're in compliance, and we move forward another 10. That, that's fine. Secondly, increase the allowable occupancy to the fire department limit of 128 persons in the prayer room, plus rabbis, childcare staff, and children and kitchen staff, for a total maximum of 145 persons. The prayer room is 32 by 32, it's 1,024 square feet, and if you deduct approximately 100 square feet, I'm not sure this is the correct term for this, but for the Torah dais, their platform, presentation platform for the, you take that out, the A3 occupancy allows 128 occupants in approximately 900 square feet. That's how that number, we arrived at that number. Those are congregants. And then, of course, you have the rabbis, you have kitchen staff, you have the childcare center, and the supervisor of the childcare center, which is how we get the extra 17 to 145. The hours we're requesting are listed below, I won't repeat them, I think they're consistent with what you saw at the staff presentation up on the screens. The 9:30 to 2:00 PM, 25 days annually, 40 persons, and four onsite parking Friday and Saturday evenings for one to two hours, one to two hours. 10 persons in four onsite parking spaces, Sunday through Friday evenings from sundown to 9:30 PM. Use of the mikvah, the religious ritual bath, and four onsite parking spaces, Sunday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, and sundown to 9:30 on all, all day, the day before each Jewish holiday. The 10-person limit is okay for that last activity. However, when we get to the Sunday morning fellowship breakfast, I'd like to add something that's not on that list, and that would be that instead of the 40 that's been asked for, and the 10 that staff has suggested for the Sunday morning prayer breakfast, fellowship breakfast, that be limited to 25 persons for Sunday morning activities. Third, authorize a zoning variance to allow a 50 by 15, or a 750-square-foot patio enclosure to encroach into the 15-yard, 15-foot rear yard setback. Let's look at the photos. If you go back in the back, there's a photo exhibit that was part of our original application. Many of those were up on the screen, so we probably could flip through them relatively fast, page 1, page 2. What you start seeing when you get to page 3 is a view, it was on the screen as well, but I want to explain it a little bit more. That's a view looking east along the rear of the patio enclosure. And the photo exhibit is at the rear of my packet, by the way. I'm on page 3 of that photo exhibit. So it's a view looking east, you see a small walkway landscaping in the garden wall, and that is about a, approximately 6.3-foot separation between the structure and the wall, the property line. Also, looking east from the east end of the patio enclosure, is the two-story house that's next door. This patio enclosure we'll be discussing is not visible to the street, it's not visible to the south, to the west, to anyone. It only is possibly visible to that one neighbor if the neighbor was upstairs in his second story. It's not visible at ground level in the rear yard, and not conflicting with anyone. If you look at page 4, the view west is from the east end of the patio closure, looking out toward Madea Creek Park and Trails, along the back of the enclosure. There's another view south, you have some of the inside view showing the nature of the structure. Back to page 7, looking down the west side of the property, there's about a 6-foot, 5 to 6-foot setback to that property line, but what you're seeing from the end of the enclosure toward the rear, is the Madea Creek Park and Trails open space. And then you saw on the, the staff had the east side setback, which is about 13 feet along the east side of the structure, up against the two houses. You have a high wall, it's probably nine feet, and it's well-vegetated. And then the last, page 8, is a view south, standing back against the south wall of the patio enclosure, looking due south, and that's what you see, open space. And then, if you stand at the west end of the patio enclosure, and you look west, this is what you see, down into Madea Creek Park and Trails. This is going to become important as I get farther into the variance request, there are no structures, no buildings near the patio enclosure. I'm continuing on number 3 now on page 1 of my handout. "The high-quality commercial storefront type of enclosure that was constructed to resolve an ongoing noise complaint problem with an adjacent neighbor located at the east rear yard property line related to habad of Oak Park luncheons following Saturday services." I, we talked about condition 19A and B. 19A is ensuring that there are no noise problems, and that they be mitigated. And then I, we talked about 19B, the elimination of being able to use the outside. These people, and I think you'll find this out today, these are good, these are good people. They had a problem with noise with a neighbor. And as in many of these nonprofit organizations, or churches, or synagogues, they have members who have talents and have skills, there's a lot of volunteer help, and the membership essentially constructed this facility. There was an electrician, there was a person that does glass, there was a structural guy, a concrete guy. And they put this thing together, but it wasn't just enclosing it with screens or light glass. This is a commercial storefront type quality with mullions, tempered glass, tinted glass, three air conditioning heating units for environmental control. It's a very elaborate structure, it probably cost in excess of $40,000 to solve the problem with the noise with the neighbor. To our knowledge, there has been no further problem with the neighbor with respect to noise, because the luncheons now are enclosed. Next point, "The habad of Oak Park rabbis were told by the enclosure builders that no permits were required." This was incorrect. There's a lot of interesting information about that. One of the contractors went to the city of Thousand Oaks to ask about it. Well, this is county jurisdiction. The Thousand Oaks building and safety people didn't think it was necessary to enclose it, have a permit to enclose it. Anyway, it was, it was confusing, they were told they didn't need the permit, and so they went ahead and did the structure. That was incorrect, as we now know. Building electrical and mechanical permits will be required if the patio enclosure is allowed to remain. After the fact, building penalties will also apply, which the rabbis acknowledge and accept. The patio enclosure is approximately 6 feet from the rear south and side west yard property lines contiguous to Madea Creek and open space. Therefore, there was no setback impact to any neighbor residence. And I mentioned the cost. Some related details to what I've just said. Item A, 27, onsite parking spaces at the Oak Park Unified School District parking lot, Saturdays and any Jewish holiday, that the school district parking lot is available, non-school days. Habad of Oak Park pays for the use of these spaces under contract with the school district. The contract is current and will be renewed in August. I say that because we are negotiating a lot of changes, some requested by the county, things like exclusive spaces that are assigned, signage to make sure those spaces are available and not occupied by other folks, the apotholic folks, or whatever. The school district is erecting gates, they're going to request that we only use the conifer entrance into the parking lot. The fees are being renegotiated. There's been, I have to say, in my opinion, an effort to attempt to break the habad operations' financial back through this process. I think we've gotten, we've expended over, I think the rabbis estimate, $85,000 to date in this process. We spent $8,000 for a parking study to verify what the rabbis have told us time and time again, that they probably need only 12 or 15 spaces, it turned out to be 13. And there were folks that requested the school district to reevaluate their charges for rental of the public parking space, the public parking lot. That caused a study and a reevaluation, and a potential increase in rates. So all of that slowed down us being able to put together the final contract. Mr. Martin Klaus, the business manager for the district, and I are working on this, and for the August meeting of the school district, we will have a negotiated contract put together, complete with the county requirements, and dealing with the new fees. So that's where that is. So I think, I think the district and the staff want to wait, see the outcome of this hearing, and then we'll formalize the permanent contract. In the meantime, we are on the extension of the existing contract, which is 35 unassigned spaces.
John, excuse me. On that paragraph A, onsite parking, it says, "On Saturdays and any Jewish holidays, that the parking is available, non-school days." What happens if one of the high holidays, I mean, I don't know the calendar is set, but what happens if a Jewish holiday falls on a school day when the school district needs that parking?
I have a good story for you. In that event, the rabbis take their services off-site. If they don't have access to the parking lot, then they go to another site, either their Canwood facility that has parking, or a hotel, or they go to someplace where there, where there is parking. And along the same lines, I will tell you, and we'll get to this, but I'll tell you, from 1994 to 2008, there wasn't a single complaint about habad of Oak Park's operation. Not one. And then there were two problems.
State those years again.
1994 through 2008.
Thank you.
Question?
And since?
Question?
Yes.
What do you base that statement on?
County staff, there are no registered complaints in all those years.
Okay, I didn't know if you contacted law enforcement to find out.
Oh, no, 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 I didn't. No, it's just, just whatever was in the county files in terms of complaints. Since 2008, that I'll discuss in a minute, there have been no additional violations. And we'll talk to you about two incidents where they really stubbed their toe, and there were violations. We'll just, I'll discuss that in a minute. But since that time, there have been no violations. We were close to one. On a Saturday, I received a call from the school district, who had been notified by a neighbor close to the school, that habad... neighbor close to the school that Habad congregants were parking in the parking lot. It was not on a Saturday, I take that back. It was during the week, it was a holiday during the week. And I tried to reach the rabbis, and of course, on Saturday, there, there's no working, there's no telephones, they don't do anything. So I got in my car and went over to Oak Park and went into the Habad facility and contacted them. And what had happened is the congregants, doing what they're told, they had, they came to services and some, I think there were five vehicles involved, went to the parking lot and parked where they believed they were supposed to park. It wasn't supposed to occur on a weekday. Wasn't a violation of the CUP, but it was a violation of the agreement we had with the school district. So we went there, they immediately had the people go remove their cars, I went over to meet with Martin Klaus and told him, so within fifteen minutes it was fixed. But that is the concern. On a non, on a school day, we cannot use the lot, we have to go off-site. Rabbi Shlomo and Rabbi Levine acknowledge that Habad Oak Park exceeded its maximum allowable occupancy, the seventy persons, seventy congregants, under the current permit on two occasions in close proximity in two thousand and eight. They were surprised by guest attendees at two consecutive bar mitzvahs over a three-week period. Had the rabbis been better informed by these, by those requesting the use of the Habad facility for these two events, they would have held them off-site. The rabbis do, however, take full responsibility for the problems these two events caused, and now investigate and manage these activities more diligently to prevent any further violations. No violations have occurred since that time. They're going to elaborate on what happened, and they're embarrassed. "Since the time of these two unfortunate events, Habad Oak Park has employed a parking monitor to prevent congregants and guests from inappropriate neighborhood parking, directing them to the Oak, uh, school district parking lot, and bar or bat mitzvahs, for example, are restricted to the religious service for the immediate family and close relatives, ten to fifteen persons on-site, with the reception celebration involving friends and guests now held off-site." And E, "Following the MAC hearing April twenty-seventh, we withdrew the request to eliminate the requirement to restore the structure to a single-family residence. Testimony at the hearing revealed considerable confusion related to our application discussion regarding the current commercial nature of the converted facility and the likelihood of it being changed to a childcare, preschool, or other religious facility in the event Habad of Oak Park discontinued its use. To allay fears that somehow we were recusing a zone change and the possibility of a future commercial intrusion into the neighborhood, we requested that condition twenty, restoration to a residence if they discontinue, remain in the CUP. I had been discussing that there'd been such significant change to the building, raising the ceiling, expanding its size, commercial kitchen, all that sort of stuff, that I didn't think it was likely or financially feasible or appropriate that it would convert back to a residence. That was part of my discussion of moving the restoration. The neighbors and the municipal advisory council folks were quite confused, thinking all of a sudden we now created a commercial facility. So we have withdrawn that request. Staff has confirmed that that condition stays, it must be restored to a residence, and we're not having any problem with that. I just don't want any confusion. We're not trying to create a rezoning, which was what people were afraid of." Now let's get to the variance and the justification. I'd like you to consider the information I'm about to present in place of the original application pages and justification that was attached to your staff report. "Setbacks in residential zones are for air, light, separation between buildings and from streets, and for other aesthetic reasons such as light, glare, noise, helping to prevent fire suppression or fire progression between buildings and incompatible encroachments against an adjacent residentially occupied use of others. In real estate language, people have a right to the quiet enjoyment of their property." Let's look at the county zoning ordinance for just a minute. I've attached three pages. They're not numbered, they're the three pages just ahead of the aerial photograph. And I guess debating this with staff and trying to explain my reasoning and our reasoning for feeling that the variance requirements could be met, I was told, and I have tremendous respect for your staff, this is just a difference of opinion that we've agreed that we have, I was told that the definition of setback, the very first page out of the ordinance that I, that I included, "Minimum distance by which structures are to be separated from boundary lines of the lot on which they are located in order to provide an open yard area which is unoccupied and unobstructed from the ground upward." That is something the staff is standing on as the justification that the variance shouldn't be granted. I made the comment that it seems to me that setback requirements are established based on intense purposes and there's reasons for it, there's a foundation for why you put something like this together. And at the time, I didn't know, and I think we concluded that there wasn't any such discussion in the zoning ordinance. Well, in further research, it is in your zoning ordinance. The next page out of your zoning ordinance, there is a specific section, eighty-one oh six dash three, that discusses the purpose and use of setbacks. This is important language. "The setback regulations are intended to prevent the overcrowding of land, provide privacy, preclude narrow unusable spaces between buildings, and provide clear areas for fire safety purposes, both to retard the spread of fire and to enable emergency personnel to reach side and rear areas of buildings." Staff position is the setback is to the property line. That comes out of the definition. My position is the purpose and use of setbacks is to have separation between buildings for all the reasons discussed. If you go to the next page, Article Six, and the matrix of the setback requirements, you see I've highlighted R one, six thousand square feet, required minimum setbacks as a heading at the top, and fifteen feet is the rear yard. Nowhere on that matrix or on that page will you see the word property line. It talks about setback and it gives a distance, and I'm maintaining that's enforceable, the purpose and use of setbacks is enforceable, separation between buildings, and that the definition is not enforceable. Staff advises they cannot recommend support for the variance due to the restrictive nature of the zoning ordinance simply requiring the minimum distance, and I've, we've read that in that particular section under definitions. And then I've talked to you about the intent and purpose being the separation of buildings for those various, for the reasons that you have setbacks. "Of the four standards of approval for a variance, circumstances and exceptional characteristics not conveying a special privilege, strict application of regulations resulting in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship, no detriment to public health, safety, or general welfare, or to the use, enjoyment, or valuation of neighboring properties. Uniqueness of location and no special privilege inconsistent with limitations on other properties in the same vicinity and zone appear to be the most difficult for staff in light of the interpreted lack of flexibility in the setback ordinance." That's staff's interpreted lack of flexibility. "Your commission does, however, have the ability and the authority to make findings in support of the request of this variance beyond what staff feels they can do. We ask your consideration of the following arguments in favor of the variance. Uniqueness. The location of the property is of a special nature in that it is contiguous to Rancho Semilla Recreation and Park District's Madea Creek Park and Trails at its south rear and west side property lines. Madea Creek is a fully improved large open space recreation trails, nature preserve, integrated with a flood control channel." Let's for a moment go back to the aerial photo, which is just ahead of the photo exhibit. So that's three or four pages in from where I'm reading. That aerial is very similar to what is, was up on the staff's presentation, very similar to the ones in your packet, and I've taken the liberty of adding the red line, which is the staff's approximate estimate of where the encroachment of the structure is. I've outlined in black and highlighted in yellow the patio enclosure. And as you can see, there's no buildings south of it, no buildings, no residential units, nothing behind that patio structure that would violate the intent and purpose of setbacks. The distance, I may be jumping the gun here from something else, the distance between the only residents that could possibly see this enclosure from its second story is about thirty feet from the enclosure to our property line and probably another fifteen or so feet to that structure. So we're forty-five feet away from the closest residence. The setback requirement between buildings, I contend, is fifteen. I'm going back now to the number one uniqueness. "Further, the character of the subject property is not like any other in the area. It is a small house of worship, reconfigured, reconfigured and reconstructed by way of conditionally use permit forty-eight forty-eight, county authorized authorization in nineteen ninety-four, and remodel a number of times since. It is totally unique from all other properties. It is not a residence, although the facade resembles a residence for neighborhood aesthetic purposes. It does not function as a residential property as authorized by the permit granted by the county, and it is the only property with frontage and access to Conifer Street between Madea Creek Park and Cannon Road. Conifer Street is a collector's street, not a residential access typical of the vast majority of streets in the neighborhood. No parking is allowed on Conifer for that entire three and a half block length, and there are bike lanes on both sides." That wasn't always the case, by the way. Conifer originally had parking on both sides. There was a subsequent change that occurred installing bike lanes and restricting the parking. There are no other residences that back to the Madea Creek open space, oh, excuse me. There are other residences back to the Madea Creek open space, as staff has pointed out, but none that front a collector's street, which is more suitable for an assembly-type use in terms of access. And no other residence is an operating house of worship, so we are in fact unique. This residence-to-residence comparison is not appropriate. We are basically an institutional use, a permitted legal institutional use. Special privilege. No special privilege would be conveyed since no other property is configured and operated as a house of worship. Therefore, no other property in the vicinity could make application for such a variance on similar grounds. Comparing this legally established use on, on the subject property to residential properties in the area is not appropriate. The nature and operation of the Habad Oak Park property is totally different than all of the single-family residential uses. A special privilege finding is not possible in that regard. Strict application of regulations. "To apply the R one zoning ordinance regulations to a house of worship assembly use, conditionally permitted by the county under the condition of use permit forty-eight forty-eight, is not reasonable or practical and creates an unnecessary hardship on the applicant. The patio enclosure solved the noise impact being experienced by both the neighboring property owner on Smoke Tree Avenue and by Habad Oak Park congregants. The neighbor would get angry and turn up his stereo during the lunches and things of that nature. The enclosure solved this problem. Given the intent and purpose of setbacks cited above, no other building is negatively impacted at the subject property's south and west property lines. This is due to the existence of the Madea Creek Park and Trails open space where no contiguous residential uses exist, and there is no setback problem to the east adjacent to the Smoke Tree Avenue properties. Not detrimental." Excuse me.
John, excuse me, John. Going back to page four, three, number three, strict applications. "To apply the R one zoning ordinance to a house of worship is not reasonable or practical." Under that assumption, you could build that structure to close the entire property. Because you say that the R one zoning ordinance doesn't apply. If it doesn't apply, why couldn't you build that structure all the way out and close anything you wanted on that property because it's a house of worship?
Well, we wouldn't do that. I'm talking only about the encroachment of the structure, and what I'm, what I'm, what I'm wanting to get across is to apply the strict R one zoning standards to a use that you've authorized to be an institutional use, to be different, to be an assembly use, is not appropriate. It's apples and oranges. And the last finding that we would need to meet is that it's not detrimental. "To the contrary, approving the variance and allowing the enclosed patio to remain actually enhances the public health, safety, and general welfare. The enclosure is thirty feet away from the east property line and forty-five feet away from the closest neighboring residence. The enclosure includes tempered tinted glass construction, insulation, and noise suppression, and heating and air conditioning. The enclosure resolves any possible nuisance noise problem referenced in condition nineteen A that requires that any potential noise problem be mitigated, and ensures that all Habad Oak Park activities are conducted indoors, including after services luncheons as currently proposed to be required by condition nineteen B." All right, here's my request. "We respectfully request your commission's careful and deliberate consideration of the unique special circumstances involved in this case, and that there is good cause to find that the variance request to reduce the rear yard setback to six feet from the property line garden wall is reasonable and appropriate to the Habad Oak Park use and of direct measurable benefit to the immediate neighbors and to the overall community well-being. By way of closure on this part of my presentation, should you find you can support the variance request, it can easily be tied to condition twenty-one. Condition twenty-one requires, as you may recall, restoration to a residence if the Habad of Oak Park's use discontinues. I would offer that this patio enclosure could be tied to condition twenty-one, so that it's not a permanent change in the zone, that because you have a conditionally use permit providing conditions of approval, that you could tie the enclosure to the restoration of a residence, which would require, as condition twenty-one says, not only restore the garage, but remove the enclosure. It does not have to be a permanent final decision. It could be tied particularly to this use to solve the noise problem, to recognize people with good intentions put it in there and did it wrong, and they're willing to pay the penalties. But it's not permanently there forever. If the residence has to be restored, the enclosure comes out and the garage gets put back in." The summary of the elements of our request is, "Extend the conditionally used permit for a period of twenty years. The staff recommendation of twenty and a ten-year planning director review is fine. Increase the allowable congregant occupancy to the fire department allowable of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight congregants in the prayer room plus the staff and rabbis for a total structure occupancy of one-forty-five. Three, authorize a twenty-five-person occupancy with four onsite parking spaces for men's fellowship breakfast on Sunday mornings. Four, authorize Friday and Saturday evening services for up to two hours as allowed by the current permit conditions." By the way, the current permit allows this. Five, delete condition sixteen B, the trash issue. Six, approve the variance based on a finding that there is no good cause not to and sufficient reasonable interpretation of the county ordinance to do so. And seven, if the findings to support the variance cannot be justifiably made, then delete condition nineteen B, allowing us the use of the outside rear patio air." Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this point. If not, Rabbi Shlomo will follow me as the next part of the applicant's presentation.
First, before questions, do we have a copy of what you just read, those seven conditions? Are they in that?
No, you do not.
All right. I'd like to have a copy of that when we, during the break.
All right, I'll write them down and hand them to the staff.
Questions, like commissioners? Commissioner Levine?
Just one right now. As it relates to your number three, I think it was, uh, strict application of the regulations in opposition or disagreement with the use of R one zoning.
Yes.
On the current application. Isn't that the same? Was R one also applicable and, and part of the original CUP that we're now requesting?
Yes, and in fact, that's correct. And this property has owned R one, and as is the rest of the tract. The argument I'm making is the county authorized the structure and the use to now be an institutional use. So the R one zone doesn't apply. It's not a residence. It's, it's, you've allowed this use to occur, you've allowed this structure to be modified, you've allowed this assembly use that is very different than a residential use. So I am saying that strict application of the R one standard, as though somebody was asking a variance from one residence to another, is not applicable in this case. You've allowed this use to be unique and different.
So you're saying if the county or planning, I guess in this case, had not allowed those various add-ons or construction that has occurred there, then that argument wouldn't be, wouldn't be valid today?
That, that, it would be closer. If, if the modifications to expand the prayer room, to eliminate the garage, to do a number of things, had not occurred and it was functioning more like a residence, that maybe allowed people to come, it might be closer. But this thing has gotten way away. It's pretty much an institutional use. So I, I, I think you need, I'm hoping you will recognize that if, if there was a strict application of land use and land use plan- of land use and land use planning and zoning law, this property probably is an institutional land use by virtue of the Conditional Use Permit. You've modified the R-1 zone, so don't hold me to strict R-1 zone standards.
How do you write this out? With reasonable expectations by neighbors, R-1 zoning.
Yes.
With the associational uses that you're claiming.
And I think it goes back to the original approval. I'm not sure this would ever have been approved if it wasn't fronting a collector's street that is very different than a typical residential street in the tract. It fronted a street that at that time had parking on both sides, is a major entry and exit way for all of the tracks. It's the only structure that fronts Conifer Street. All the rest of the homes back to it, all the way back to Canaan. So I think that was part and parcel of how this use was allowed in the first place. The fact that it backed to open space on two sides probably was a consideration. There seemed to be, in my mind, looking at the file and considering the physical location of property, some justification for allowing this neighborhood synagogue to occur, which is not uncommon in a lot of neighborhoods throughout our county. These neighborhood synagogues do occur in residential areas.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yeah, just a trailer on your comment. I almost interpret your comments to be leaning toward an argument for improper zoning for that site, and that maybe that should be the argument as opposed to what we're hearing today.
Okay. I will admit I'm scratching to help you find justification for the findings for this variance. And I am using the fact that your very ordinances and your general plan and your zoning code allows conditionally permitted uses in certain zones. So once a conditionally permitted use occurs, it modifies the standards of the zone. I mean, there's special things that are allowed to occur. But once you do that, and you get as far out as this one has gotten, you don't have a residence anymore. So please don't hold me to a strict residential standard if you recognize and authorize that we have a right to be there and we're legally permitted. It's a tough scratching way to help you find justification for the variance. Thank you.
I just want to, before you go, not a question, just a comment. Page one-twenty-one, because I was here at the time. In September of nineteen ninety-four, this commission only had two affirmative votes, which was a basic denial of the original CUP. So what John's relating to is that it was a permitted use in the zone. That went to the Board of Supervisors, which then they approved it. So not to make John's argument by point, as we dealt with this a number of years ago, and the elected officials gave that approval. So just for a little background and clarification, as policymakers, we go forward with this. So again, not to make John's argument, but the five people that the electorate decide on made that decision to allow the use.
Thank you, Commissioner Westner. Thank you, Mr. Newton. But before you go, this has gone on a little bit longer than we thought, and I hope that the other two applicants who are going to speak before the speakers can condense a little bit, but we've been going for all over two hours. I'd like to take a -- my plan is take a ten-minute break now and go to about twelve-thirty and take a lunch break. So please, if you haven't filled out a white card, don't do it now. Wait till you hear all of the people make their presentations. Wait till all the applicant speakers, and then decide if you need to fill out a card. Let's take a ten-minute break, come back at twenty after. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.[850.82]
And we take that responsibility very, very seriously. I feel that it's important for me to begin with that comment because I would like to address the spirit of this CUP. I have been around very religious people of various faiths my whole life. We've all read stories in the news about people that have done terrible things in the name of religion. And I would imagine when a CUP like this comes before you and the question of some very religious people practicing in a residential neighborhood, that you may question whether or not we put our religion before the needs of the neighbors. And I assure you today that Chabad very seriously takes into consideration and makes it a priority to address the neighborhood concerns. Want to share one story with you about a bar mitzvah. A bar mitzvah which is a child's reaching his milestone of 13. And the family told us to bring in some people. We didn't get into any specifics. We hadn't had any problems. And suddenly there was a bigger crowd and someone parked in front of a neighbor's home. How did we find out about it? That neighbor came horn blaring and screaming. We won't get into what, but basically, one of the members of our community clarified that someone had parked in front of her home. And when she asked them to move, they refused to move. So this congregant came inside. I was at the dais with the Torah open, getting ready to call this bar mitzvah boy up for him to celebrate this great moment in his life, something he prepares for for close to a year. And the congregant whispered into my ear, "We have a problem. Someone parked on the street. There's probably a few other guests that have parked on the street, and a neighbor just came by to say they're upset." I, as a rabbi, did not hesitate, and it never crossed my mind to put aside the parking issue, although legal, in place or below this very holy and important ritual of the bar mitzvah. I stopped the service, and I announced that this young man will not get called to the Torah and celebrate this milestone in his life until every single car in the neighborhood has been moved. That's the assurances I bring you today, that as religious as we are, and though some of us dress a little bit different, may even have some funny names, but we very much live by the code I mentioned earlier. And we very much take the neighbors' concerns very, very seriously. And I'm very happy to say that, aside from a few mishaps, we have lived up to our commitments. And contrary to what you may have heard or read, I know that we can stand here today As Mr. Newton had mentioned, 15 years, there are no violations on record. Also, in the last almost two years, there's not been any new violations. There are retroactively, there have been found, I believe, five violations, I'm not sure the exact number, that they found, I believe, in 2009, going back to 2002, '05 and '06, which I'd be happy to address if you have any questions about later. However, in no way do I say we're perfect. My congregation will be very disappointed right now when I admit to you that I am a human being. And we do make mistakes. And we are not perfect. In late 2008, there were two weekends with bar mitzvahs where they invited more people than we anticipated, which triggered some of the, let's call it, passion of the neighbors who oppose our request today. Few weeks later, we had our high holiday services, which, I believe Chairman, you were the one who asked about holidays that may come out on weekdays. Our high holiday services are the, you know, highest attendance at a religious event. It basically comes out what's called rosh shan and yom kippur. And because of the large attendance and because of our commitment to the community, we have always promoted primarily a big service at the Westlake Hyatt Hotel, where we, that's what we advertise, that's what we push. You can go around Agoura area and already see pamphlets promoting these events. We always pushed it there so that the local synagogue should not have that burden. Well, that year, there were a lot of people. As soon as the service was over, I called Rabbi Levine, who was actually co-officiating in Westlake Village at the Hyatt, and said, "We can't ever do the high holiday services like this again here. It's not safe, it's inappropriate, and it doesn't belong here." And we immediately changed the venue the following, I believe, two high holidays to a public school in the neighborhood. So that's the way we address that issue. As I mentioned, I am a human being. Our congregants are human beings. At the same time, if we make commitments to the county and to our neighbors, we have an obligation to honor them. And I would hope that we would be judged not by a few mistakes, but by our 15 years, or now 16 years of performance, as well as the remedies we put in place to avoid these problems again. I would hope, as I treat my children, when they make a mistake, if they learn from it and correct it, I'm willing to forgive them. And I hope that the Commission will see our actions for what it is, responsible neighbors and very respectful to the neighborhood and to our CUP conditions. We immediately, after those two bar mitzvahs, put in place a few conditions. Number one, that any guests that are being invited must be notified in writing and by phone beforehand to be told exactly where to park their cars. Number two, the family who is celebrating, say, a bar mitzvah, is responsible to make sure that there is a parking monitor during the whole service, standing outside the synagogue, making sure that anyone that did not get the message, or may think they're a wise guy, that we're going to get them at that point where the monitor will stop them and verify where they parked, or tell them to go move their car. And number three, which happens on a regular basis, where people will call to see if they can have their bar mitzvahs or other family events at our synagogue, when we find out that they're bringing a large crowd. This week, actually, it happened, a woman that's been attending services for many years finally had her first grandchild and wanted to do the baby naming at the synagogue, as is our tradition, and called Rabbi Levine and said, "Can we do it?" And he asked, "How many people?" And she said, "Well, my sisters and my nephews, and everyone's coming, Rabbi. It's going to be beautiful. There's 20 of us coming." Rabbi Levine told her, "We love you. We're sorry to tell you this, but it will exceed our current limits. I'd like you to call Rabbi Briski in Agoura Hills, or Rabbi Sapachinsky in Westlake Village, and see if you can do the celebration there, because they're on commercial properties and they can support that type of crowd." So we have put the remedies in place to address the issues that came up just under two years ago, and since then, we've had no violations. The other big mistake we made is the enclosed patio. The background to this is as follows. We have a neighbor who, let's just say, keeps it very interesting in challenging us, and I do say that respectfully. And one of the things he used to do at the end of our service, he would blast music in his backyard towards our backyard to disturb us. Ironically, the sheriff, who I quoted earlier, who said he's never been called to Chabad in five years, said, "There was one incident that I was called in, in a call that's associated with Chabad. Another neighbor called to complain about this neighbor's blasting music on Saturdays." That was the only time this sheriff was brought in. One day Rabbi Levine was walking down the street and met this neighbor, and said to him, "Let's stop fighting. What can we do to make you happy?" And the response was, "If I do not have to see or hear you, would make me very happy." Rabbi Levine came into the synagogue that day, I remember it like yesterday, and said, "I have a great idea. Let's get the community together, and let's enclose this, create like a sunroom. We'll do a double pane glass. We'll put in air conditioning so we don't have to open the windows, and this neighbor will not have to hear us or see us again." And that's what triggered that enclosure. Many of our congregants have actually moved to Oak Park because they love the outdoors, and it's a beautiful backyard. And some were actually opposed to it. But we decided this was the best approach to take. We asked a couple of the congregants who know a little more about this than rabbis do. You don't want to see me with a hammer. And they did some investigating, and they came back and told us that we can do this. We asked about permits. They said, "No need." Well, we all know that's not right. And I'm here to say shame on us and shame on me as a rabbi. Maybe I should have asked some more. I'm second guessing myself every day. But I assure you of something. I would never take close to $40,000 of my community's hard-earned money, money that we can use for people in need, and use it on a structure that I thought for one instant was not legal or may one day be pulled down. And we understand there may be some penalties, and we're willing to pay those penalties. But we ask that if there is reason enough to grant us that variance, I humbly and respectfully ask you to consider granting this to us. As far as I've heard, some say that Chabad disregards the laws and builds illegal structures. And sitting where the members of Commission are sitting, you can say, "Hey, it can go either way. Maybe he did know, maybe he didn't know." I'd ask you to look in our file at our history. We've done other renovations to that property, and every time, we've done it the right way. This was a mistake, and we're willing to pay for it. So with that introduction, just kidding.
You've got two minutes.
With that background, let me briefly explain the reasoning and the spirit of our application. The number 70 was an arbitrary number 15 years ago. If you take a family of two or three, you're talking about 20 families. We have, thank God, grown. Oak Park is a beautiful place to live. The secret got out. People wanted to live in that neighborhood. And some of those people happen to be observant Jews who cannot drive, who are not permitted to drive on the Sabbath. So between having our children, a neighbor being inspired to come in and say a memorial prayer for a loved one, or a new resident in the community, we have grown. And today, that number 70 has maxed us out. I'll share with you, rabbis don't know how to tell short stories, but I'll try. This Saturday, Friday night, a young woman walked into our synagogue. And I went over to welcome her and ask her where she's from, and she said, "Just around the corner, three doors down on Smoke Tree." And I looked at her, you know, the rabbi thinks he knows all the Jews in the neighborhood, and I was taken by surprise. And she smiled and says, "Yeah, I've never been to Chabad. I've never been raised traditional by any means. But I was just in Israel for five months and was really inspired. And I came home all excited that I get to observe my Sabbath right in my own neighborhood in Oak Park, because I remembered there's a Chabad around the corner." And then she hears us talking about the CUP and says, "So you're telling me that when I come visit my parents," she's going off to school in Northern California, "I may not be allowed to participate in your services?" And I said, "Hopefully you will, because hopefully the Commission will grant us our application." We are here to inspire people. We are here to bring more godliness, love, and happiness into their lives. We are here to help those that find themselves in need, be it money to pay for rent or food, a family with a child of special needs, or someone going through a difficult loss. That's why we're here. We are here to offer a place of worship to the residents of Oak Park, and we need your help. Therefore, we are requesting, amongst all our other requests in the application, I'll just address the number of people, that we be allowed to have those 145 people attend our services. It is within the amount permitted according to the fire code. Keeping us at 70, which is the amount we have now, would be turning away residents of Oak Park who have a need or a desire to attend, but would not be allowed, even though there is plenty of space and it was determined to be safe. I would like to conclude with one last thought. Just a little while ago, we all stood and pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, like the principles of our country that we all hold so dear. We must remember that on a micro level, our communities shall live by those same principles. We must always remember that different is not a bad thing. Different is America. We must always remember that allowing a group of people to come together a few hours a week to practice their religion is not a bad thing. It is American, even if it is in a residential neighborhood. Standing in front of your home on a Saturday afternoon and watching families of all shapes and sizes walk by is not a bad thing, even if you don't understand why they do what they do. Nevertheless, that is American. Just as American as the sound of children playing soccer on a nearby field is American. And believe me, I do understand that this process that we are going through here today and through the last two years, as painful as it has been, is also the American way. I very much appreciate the awesome responsibility this Commission has to protect the quality of our community. I truly do. And I want to assure you that if you grant us our CUP, we will honor it diligently, and we will continue to help make Oak Park and all of Intera County the greatest place to live. To most effectively illustrate for you the level of support and devotion the community has to our small synagogue and to all the activities of goodness and kindness that emanates from this little shtebel, and in the interest of time, I would like to ask that all those here today in support of Chabad to please rise. Please remain standing for one moment. Honorable members of the Commission, I hope that you can appreciate that these good people have taken off of work today, united as one people, to proclaim in one voice that Chabad is great for Oak Park, and to please, I ask you humbly and respectfully, grant us our CUP. Please be seated. Members of the Commission, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time and consideration.
Are there any questions? Yes. Commissioner Madrigas.
Rabbi, I don't think anybody here has any argument about the benefit of the Chabad community. But I was reading the literature that was sent to us, which includes, I believe it's a, probably a copy of a website page, Shabbat of Cano.
Okay, yeah.
And it says hours at Oak Park are 6:30 in the morning. Is that incorrect?
That is incorrect, but let me explain. That is one of the violations of Chabad. And just to give you a little background to it, when we went through the original CUP, Rabbi Briski was the spiritual leader of Chabad of Oak Park in addition to being the executive director of the entire Chabad of Cano. He championed the CUP. A few years later, Chabad bought a property down off of Reyes Adobe in Agoura Hills, and he moved there to start up what is today the headquarters of Chabad of Cano and the local synagogue for Agoura Hills. Over the years, the responsibility for programming in Oak Park transitioned slightly into Rabbi Levine's hands and myself. During that time, there absolutely was a small breakdown in communication, and for a short while, we were holding morning services during the week at 6:30 in the morning. One day, one of the passionate opponents to Chabad met me in the street and basically told me that a neighbor had told her that people showing up at 6:30 in the morning disturbs them. And also, she reviewed the CUP and found that we're not supposed to be there. I canceled it immediately, and we've never had services during the week there again.
Okay. The other thing I noticed, on the same page at the bottom of the letterhead apparently, it references Shabbat Lubavitch Media Center.
That would be probably from a website...
Same website.
Right, so that, Chabad Lubavitch is a worldwide organization, that its principles are basically in the aftermath of the Holocaust, to rebuild Jewish pride and to invite people to practice their religion again. As many of us sitting here today, we lost many family members during the Holocaust, and there was a sense of running away to America and losing our Jewish identity to keep us safe. And Chabad Lubavitch, under the leadership of Rabbi Schnayerson, was to go out into the world, be there for people unconditionally. We don't have any membership. Everyone's invited. And to really be there and rebuild the Jewish people from the ashes of the Holocaust. So Chabad Lubavitch has 3,000 to 4,000 centers around the world. You may recall during the terrorist attack in Mumbai, that there was a rabbi and his wife that were held hostage and subsequently killed. Those were a rabbi and his wife from Brooklyn who moved to Mumbai to be there for the Jews that come through that area.
So the Chabad of Oak Park is not affiliated, or is affiliated?
Oh, we're affiliated because, yes, I wasn't sure.
That was, yeah, that was my question.
Yes, we're affiliated.
I asked that because I read, as I read through the various comments and supportive, I recalled literature I'd read before that spoke to that portion of the Jewish community and its purpose and intent, and obviously, hope to plant seeds in the community, to create that community, which I guess is why we are where we are today on this particular issue at this location.
In a good way, I hope.
I had a question too. How many Shabbats are there in the Cano Valley?
Rabbi Briski can address it.
Because my question is, and of course, this is by choice, I wonder how many people outside of Oak Park are coming to the Shabbat of Oak Park and not going to the Shabbat near their home? Now, I don't know the logic in this, but what you're saying or what you're implying to me is that the Shabbat of Oak Park is for Oak Park residents, especially those who walk on the Sabbath.
Yes. Now, I will say there are some people that may walk over the county line. So there are some of those. But, you know, like Starbucks, there's a Chabad almost on every corner in the Cano Valley. And so anybody that would be driving, trust me, Rabbi Briski's a much more interesting and better-looking rabbi than me, there would be no need for them to come to Chabad of Oak Park, where we have limited number of occupancy, limited parking spaces, when there are centers, as Rabbi Briski will illustrate soon for you, all over the neighborhood that are more spacious and geared towards larger events.
Thank you. Commissioner Madrigas.
So part of the issue today is that the head county, I know it's not the proper term, but that's a term I'll use, is being impacted by other congregants that are from out of the area that are impacting your total population.
I think you'll hear from those that want to speak today that that's not the case. There are some people that may walk, but it's, there's no reason for them to be coming to us. There's plenty of other Chabbats nearby.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. The other rabbi, I'm not sure he's better-looking, but his beard is longer.
A lot longer. But mine has become much more gray than his.
Thank you. We have one more of the applicants before we get to the three-minute limit of speakers, and that's Mark Westholm. He's from the Parking Report. So try to keep it as short as you can, Mark.
Good morning.
Morning.
Chairman and members of the Commission. There's a lot of data in the report, so actually, my presentation needs to be longer than the previous ones. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Really, I'd just like to highlight about four or five numbers and let it go with that and answer any questions you may have. We observed parking conditions and pedestrian traffic on two occasions, one during Hanukkah and then one a couple of weeks later. Both days were surprisingly consistent. The patterns we observed, the arrivals, departures, drop-offs, parking, it was remarkably similar on each day. So in our report, which is in your packet, we basically averaged those two, the sets of observations. So some of the numbers, a total of 17 vehicles arriving, carrying a total of 30 people. There were also 54 people who walked in. So that's a total of 84 people. I'm not familiar with their services. I'm not Jewish, so this is all kind of a new thing to me, and I was on the outside just observing the traffic. But it struck me how people drift in and drift out. It's not like a lot of church services where everybody comes, the service apparently starts at a certain time, boom, it ends, everybody leaves. It didn't appear to me to work like that. People drift in and they drift out. So there were 84 people that we observed to enter during the period of time we watched, but some would leave before others came. And the same thing with cars. So the maximum number of cars that we observed that were parked in the area that were related to the synagogue at any time was 13, and a maximum was 74 people there at any one time. It's possible that maybe somebody showed up real early before we got there or something like that. But that gives you a sense of what we found when we did the observations. And really, at that, I'll just stand back and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner West.
Yes. How many parking studies would you say you've done over your career?
Formal parking studies like this, only a few. Parking is frequently an adjunct to a lot of developments, so I've done many, many parking analyses, especially connected to proposed developments. I've done a few of these specifically with like neighborhood intrusion issues and things like that.
Yeah, a lot of traffic studies for commercial developments or...
Yeah, yeah, I've done, I've done. And also, one of the things I've done in my career is serve as city traffic engineer on a contract basis to half a dozen cities. And so I reviewed a zillion parking studies, traffic impact studies. So I've prepared a lot of them and also reviewed and approved a lot of them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Madrigas.
That explains why your name is so familiar to me, Mark, having read reports for the city, Thousand Oaks and Moore Park.
Yeah, Thousand Oaks and Moore Park are two of the cities I've served as city traffic engineer before.
I had one question. You were referring to numbers. Were any of these parking, I'm assuming these parkings, at least one parking study was done on a Saturday morning when soccer season was in session or softball season, so you could see the congestion of people coming in to the Oak Park Unified School District lot. Did you, were any of your studies done when soccer or softball season was in effect?
I think not. Our two observations were, one was in December and one was in January. We saw some soccer activity, but I think it was just like some practice... We saw some soccer activity, but I think it was just like some practices, so we did not see a lot of soccer activity. So I cannot speak to the cumulative effect of synagogue traffic and soccer traffic. The nice, you know, it was kind of a nice benefit for us because it allowed us to focus on the synagogue traffic, so to the extent we can isolate what that impact is, what their parking demand is, that helped us do that without being too distracted by, by all the soccer parking.
Thank you. I'm, I want to throw this out now, but I'd like the homeowners, when they come up, let me know about the parking on the streets by soccer or softball. Has that been a problem for them? But thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, now, we're going into the three-minute clock. It's noon, we're going to go for another half hour, forty minutes before we have lunch. So I'd like to, what I'd like to do is call the speaker, have him come up, and then have the, the next speaker come up and sit in the front row so they can come right up, and I'll keep rotating that way. And please bear with me about, I don't speak Hebrew, and I certainly cannot pronounce some of these. So the first one is Rabbi, is this the guy with the great beard?
Yeah.
Please come up, Rabbi, state your name and address, and he will be followed by Douglas Cruessin.
Thank you, my name is Rabbi Moshe Briski, Honorable Chairman. If with your permission, Rabbi Sapichinsky is also scheduled to speak, a colleague of ours has to conduct a funeral in Los Angeles shortly, so I'd like to ask if we can have him go ahead of me so that he can leave and conduct the funeral.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's not often that I get a chance to replace Rabbi Briski.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Looks like Sapichinsky, seven, seven, two, Tranfa County and Westlake Village, actually, Thousand Oaks, Ventura County. I stand here today because I'm probably the guy who deserves all the blame for Chabad of Oak Park. It was twenty-five years ago, July twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty-five, to be exact, when I began the Chabad in Oak Park. And since, ironically, although I live in Westlake now, I still feel that I serve the community of Oak Park, as Rabbi Shlomo mentioned. I get calls all the time from potential bar mitzvah families who live in Oak Park who need to do their bar mitzvahs at Westlake Village. Monday through Friday, we have a service in Westlake, begins at 6:15 a.m. This morning, there are about thirty people there, I'd say at least half of them were from the Oak Park community. I think I interact with the Oak Park people more than Rabbi Levine does sometimes. During the ten-minute recess earlier, I received a phone call from the grandmother that Rabbi Shlomo spoke about earlier, and it actually irked me, I don't mind accommodating the Oak Park people, but this call was particularly aggravating because her brother is Orthodox, he lives in L.A., he's the great uncle of the child who needs to be named on Saturday. So to accommodate this family, just so you appreciate what's going on, and she told me there were ten people who were going to be coming, because she had told the sisters-in-law not to come, she, the grandmother herself, said, "I won't go to services, just so that we can be in Oak Park in my community." And when Rabbi Levine said, "No," so now I have to take the brother from L.A. housing in my, in my house for the Sabbath, because he's going to drive, just so that ten people, whatever it is, can show up to name their first granddaughter, because they can't do it in their own community, because God forbid, they will exceed some number. I want to briefly share with you, I know my time is running out, twenty-five years ago, I attended the first MAC meeting regarding the CUP. I left my office, I was encountered by a woman from Oak Park who was crying because somebody had, in her family, just got cancer, she asked me to pray for her, I comforted her, and I excused myself, I ran to the meeting, and I encountered a vocal group of neighbors, all opposed to Chabad's decision to open a facility in Oak Park, the first one in eighty-five, which was at the corner of Sunny Crest and Canyon in the Oak Park Village, commonly referred to as the Oak Park Dentistry, if you're from the area, Lisa Brennan's office. There were, there are forty-five parking spaces in this commercial facility, and yet the neighbors were against. So in conclusion, I just want to say, I don't think it makes a difference if we're parking on the street, we got forty-five parking spaces, and the neighbors came out against us back in eighty-five, nothing has changed in twenty-five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. All right, Rabbi, you're up, and then followed by Douglas Cruessin.
My name is Rabbi Moshe Briski, I am at three oh three, four, five, Canwood Street in Agoura Hills. In nineteen ninety-four, I stood at this podium presenting to you CUP forty-eight, forty-eight. So just some background to that conditional use permit, as Commissioner Westner made mention, it was a two-to-one vote at the Planning Commission, we had to appeal our own victory, and a five-nothing vote at the Board of Supervisors. The number seventy at that time was wonderful, we had about thirty-five congregants, our sanctuary at the time was about three hundred and fifty square feet, it was fine. We brought up then, what happens if the community grows, what happens if people have children, what happens if more people walk in, and they said there's a process called a major modification. Fifteen years, we haven't used that major modification, finally, fifteen years later, we come before you requesting finally that major modification to change that number. I also would have you know that that original conditional use permit, that was our center, meaning that was our headquarters, Conifer Street was where I worked, I had four offices there, four staff people, people came there for counseling, my evening classes took place at that center, and that was all part of the CUP. It is us, Chabad, that removed these usages over the fifteen years, not increased usages, removed it to now it's just operated one day a week on Saturday, and the evenings for the mikvah, which is quite private and very, very small. Since that time, since fifteen years ago, this is what we have done in our community. I represent the Agoura Hills area in Ventura County. We have opened up a large facility in Agoura Hills, which currently now is constructing another facility, doubling its space, to handle all bar mitzvahs and all celebrations and all weekday events for all the communities. We have opened up a center in Thousand Oaks, we've opened up a center in Calabasas, we've opened up in Simi Valley, in Camarillo, in Oxnard, and in Moore Park and in Channel Islands. So we have opened up many centers to take all the people that need to come by cars from other communities, and we have plenty of synagogues for them. The Conifer Steeble, as Andrea Ozde referred to it, is a home in a residential community that is purchased by the community to serve as their house of prayer. Primarily, more than anything else, the people walk with their families, whether they walk along the beautiful creek or they walk on the streets of Oak Park, to go and pray. That's what this request is about, very simple. Honorary members of the Planning Commission, the request that Chabad of the Canoah, Chabad of Oak Park is making, is that residents of Oak Park, California have the right and the freedom to walk into a sanctuary and pray to God. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Remember, if you're going to speak and you're, you're repeating something, you can just say, "I agree with someone," and so forth. The next speaker is Douglas, and then after that is Rabbi Dove Monchikis. Douglas, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, Commission. I will summarize the, the letter that I sent, I am one of the over one hundred folks that send a support letter regarding...
Excuse me, Douglas, before you begin, would you give us your address on...
Absolutely, seven, seven, five, Sky Ridge in Oak Park. I am a resident of Oak Park, I've been in Oak Park since I was thirteen years old. There's been a period of time in and out that, that I've not been in Oak Park, but Oak Park is, is my home. My wife and I have moved back to Oak Park on a permanent basis a year ago, and the number-one reason that we have moved is to be near to the Chabad. Because this issue has been ongoing, we put our home purchase plans on hold until this is resolved, because if we were facing the possibility of Chabad not being able to serve our needs because of space issues, the, the other niceties about Oak Park don't outweigh the need for, for our synagogue. I am one of the people that drives to synagogue, park in the, park in the spaces provided by the, by Chabad at the Oak Park Unified School District, but one of the issues that is, is a sticking point for me, and that seems to be a sticking point for the, the opposition, is, is the parking. Parking is legal in a residential neighborhood for any purpose. If I chose to park there, I could. The neighbors have no say in whether I park there or not. The conditional use permit by Chabad, they are required to have parking available. People who attend cannot be forced to park there. I do, out of respect for the neighbors. I understand what the issue is, but to blame or to put, to put the, to put the blame on Chabad for people parking in the neighborhood is, is silly. There are, there is redress that, that they can, that they can have if they choose to call the CHP or the local authorities. There are other ways that they can, I believe, not rezone, but tag the neighborhoods for, for parking permits if they chose to do that. But this area is a residential neighborhood that also has a county, excuse me, a school district corporate headquarters, office, has two open space parks, parks available to it, that, people park in the neighborhood, that's what it is. It's an area to park, my tax dollars go to pay for it, people who want to use the park, they are permitted to park in the neighborhood, it's perfectly legal. Legal doesn't necessarily make it right, but it also shouldn't be, shouldn't be held against Chabad, especially when spaces are, are provided.
Thank you, Douglas. The next speaker, Rabbi Dove, followed by Renat Zafran. Yes, Rabbi, thank you, you're welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I have the shortest beard of the rabbis, so I'll keep my remarks the shortest as well.
But it's the darkest.
Thank you. That's changing. My wife and I moved here about eighty years, eight years ago to Oxnard to open the Chabad Jewish Center there, and as Rabbi Briski mentioned, there are various satellite Shabbads throughout the area. The reason we specifically moved to Oxnard, although there is synagogues in Ventura and Camarillo and the surrounding areas, was to service the community. When we first moved there, we knew two Jewish families, we now have services and programs, and we have a very nice turnout, all from the locals. I believe the Oak Park is for the exact same purpose, specifically for the local Jews in that area of all level of observance. Chabad is not an Orthodox synagogue, it is a Jewish center, where anyone of the faith or even not of the Jewish faith that would like to explore the Jewish faith is welcome with open arms, and that's our mission statement, as was mentioned earlier. I just would like to point that I'm one, I'm an example of why I am in Oxnard, although there are synagogues in the surrounding areas, is for this exact purpose, so that the local Jews have a local place that they can go to, we encourage them to walk, many of our participants do. If someone drives, we do not encourage that, we try to help them get to a level of observance where they can. I know of some individuals who specifically moved to our community after we were in town so that they have a place that they can walk to, I understand that's the same case in the Oak, Oak Park area. So I very much support it, and I believe that if they have a need for more members to participate from the local community, that's a positive sign of growth, it's not a negative thing, that means more people are living in Oak Park, or those that are living there are now getting more involved in social and religious and community activities, which is something that should be encouraged, that they should have that opportunity when they wish to go nearby and participate with other members of their community in worship and in prayer and in social events. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Rabbi.
May I, may I ask one question?
Rabbi? Rabbi, please.
I'm just curious, where are you located in Oxnard?
We are currently at the corner of Victoria and Channel Islands. We're at the fishing port.
I'm familiar with that location, thank you.
Right upstairs from Spud Nuts.
Right, right. I'm familiar with the location, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that was cold.
It is.
The next speaker, Renat Zafran, followed by Sari Huber, Huber, I can't read this, Sarah's, is Sari here next? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, it's an honor to be the first non-beard up here. I feel like...
And the pleasure.
I feel like I'm actually the poster child for Chabad of Oak Park, yes.
Excuse me, could you also give us your address, please?
Yes, I currently live at six, four, five, three, Canyon Doom Road in Malibu, Chabad of Oak Park is the closest Chabad right down Canyon Road. I've been involved in Chabad of Oak Park since I was seven, I'm now thirty-one, I knew all of these guys before they had beards. I am very involved in the Oak Park community, I have worked in every single school in Oak Park Unified School District, either as a school counselor or a substitute teacher. Every school in the Oak Park Unified School District is in a residential area, there is chaotic traffic and parking every single day of the week in these schools, okay? The neighbors work it out, they figure it out, they accept it, they embrace it, they own it, they love it, they love having the school around, okay? Our community is similar to a school, you should see how these like total macho men are carrying around each other's children and nurturing and babying them, this community grows together and takes care of each other, and we're also in a neighborhood, and we're also being penalized for the parking, the amount of people and whatnot. It almost makes me wonder, you know, what are these people really angry about, you know, like, we're just living our lives, just like the other public parks and public schools and public places, that, yeah, they create a little chaos and a little traffic, but that's what we love about community. You know, I just feel like if someone in the neighborhood had a poker night every Thursday night and eight different cars were parked on the street, would that cause an uproar and an anger? That's actually all I pretty much have to say, I'm, I'm very excited to be here to represent my community today because I feel that this community has made me the person that I am today, and I'm proud to be that person, and I hope that we can just figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Renat. The next speaker is Sari, followed by Harry Medved.
I allow Mr. Medved, he needs to leave.
I'm sorry, can't, can't...
I can give you my, my time.
Here's a woman here that was very kind to come today, that's an immediate neighbor, and I wanted to ask, I had given in an order of cards for some of the people, and we got a little bit mixed up, so she's offering to give her time at the moment, young woman to go ahead of her, that's okay with you?
Who is it, who is it giving up their time?
Sarah is allowing her to go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I thought you were calling me a young woman, I was liking that, too. Anyway, hi.
Then, then Harry's speaking after you, okay? Okay, thank you. Welcome, your name and address, please.
Thank you, my name is Sim Carter, the address is five, nine, zero, one, Conifer Street. And I don't usually go around saying this, but perhaps it's relevant to let you know that I am not Jewish, my husband is not Jewish, so I have no cause or reason to use the Chabad, so I think that might be important. A friendly acquaintance of mine, I, I think who knew I lived in the area, wondered what I thought of Chabad, and where I live on Conifer, by the way, is directly out my front door, directly across the street from me is the creek that you saw pictures of earlier. From my point of view, the Chabad is east of that creek, so I'm diagonal like that. All right.
How far are you from the Shabbat? Block, two blocks?
No, no, half a block.
Okay, thank you.
Half a block.
And what are the closest neighbors?
I am definitely, well, I am, I am the second closest neighbor, I'm, do you see it on the, okay. There are basically four houses across the street and between, between the Chabad and the parking structure, the parking lot that you're talking about, my house is. So in fact, the people walk from that parking lot to Chabad. Okay, I'm just going to read a letter that I wrote to Eddie Jacobson, who's affiliated with the, the synagogue. Dear Eddie, you phoned the other night and asked, "Since we live so close to the Chabad, if I felt the Chabad was a neutral-to-good neighbor?" No, Eddie, I'm sorry, but in all candor and honesty, I cannot say that. I spoke with my husband, Mark, and our son, Russell, and they feel the same way I do. The Chabad is not a neutral-to-good neighbor, the Chabad is an excellent neighbor. We live across the street, the second house from the creek. We feel our lives are enriched by seeing the families, the boys and their fathers walking to the Chabad, they talk quietly, comfortably with each other. There is no raucous or rowdy behavior, just people pleasantly pursuing their faith. Like many people in the area, we enjoy taking our Beagle for a walk around the creek. At the point where the path crosses, passes the side of the Chabad, as the weather warms up, the sound of soft laughter and conversation from the backyard always makes me smile. Sometimes the children play in the front, they do so without screaming or yelling, no curse words or hurled. They do so without screaming or yelling, no curse words or hurled. They, like most of Oak Park's kids, are good kids and a pleasure to see. I am happy to see people of such strong faith, determined to hold on to their traditions in these crazy times. I am grateful that our son is exposed firsthand to the way the members of the Chabad carry themselves in our modern world.
I'm sorry, I think we've got to just.
That's it. That's basically the end of it. Did not mean to go on so long, but I am one of the neighbors that sees the people walk by, and I am not aware of it being a nuisance. I understand that their synagogue forbids them to park on the street, but they're welcome to park on the street in front of my house.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Harry Medved, followed by Sim Carter.
Thank you for the opportunity to clear the air. My name's Harry Medved, I'm at 347 Media Creek Lane in Oak Park. And we feel truly blessed to live in Ventura County. We love it here. We moved here just a little bit more than a year ago. And I just want to make it clear that I find it sad that certain people are sitting on one side of the room and other people on the other side of the room. And I hope when we get together here in the future that we can all sit together and work together for the common good. It's unfortunate because there really is no us versus them. The reason my wife Michelle and our two little girls moved to Oak Park is for the same reason that everybody loves Oak Park, for the charming curb appeal, for the beautiful nature trails maintained by Rancho Simi, and for the tranquility. We moved to Oak Park because our realtor told us it was built out, that there would be no further building. And that is correct. We are not looking to expand. And one of the things I really find painful about this whole debate is people keep talking about a major expansion. We're looking to maintain the status quo. As the newest member of the community who lives within walking distance, if today, at the end of this hearing, we have only seventy people allowed, if there turns out to be seventy people, I would have to be told, "Sorry, you can't come." If my brother Michael Medved, visiting from Seattle, wants to come to the synagogue to say prayers for our late father, to do Kaddish, he'd say, "Sorry, you can't come," even if you're speaking at the Oak Park Library, because you'd be number seventy-two, my brother Jonathan Medved would be number seventy-three, and so on. And so it just seems very arbitrary to use a number from sixteen years ago, when I look around the shul and I see, as does the fire department, plenty of room for all of us. And we all walk, we're walking Medved brothers, we don't need to drive. So I do think, we don't take for granted our presence in the community, we'd like to give something back to it. It's not just for Chabad. And one of the things we've started is called the CHEVRE Club. CHEVRE is C-H-E-V-R-E. It's an acronym for Conejo Hikers, Enjoying Ventura's Rural Environments. And we take kids on the trail and pick up trash with these little reachers that are really fantastic. My daughter just did the other night, we went through Media Creek. We're going to do two different hikes coming up in August and September. We did one earlier this year where we raised four hundred dollars for Rancho Simi Parks and Recreation to plant new trees to coincide with Jewish Arbor Day. And another thing we hope to do for the common good is we're starting a group called NOAA, which is Neighborhood Outreach Alliance, where hopefully, if there are complaints or issues or ideas of what can we do to make the neighborhood better, please come to us, rather than calling the police or the county, which I guess they haven't received the calls, but there's stuff that we can do together. If anyone sees, God forbid, any issue, we can solve it. So I'd like to invite all of our neighbors to join us in this NOAA group, which will start very soon. There's more than enough manpower and woman power at Chabad to put it to work for the betterment of the community at large. And once again, we feel blessed to live in Ventura County. Please come check out our shul, you'll see any Saturday morning, it's the quietest building you'll find because of the noise barrier, because there is no noise that you can hear outside. But just do us a favor, let us resolve the permit issue first before you come, otherwise you guys might be number seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, and then you'll have to find us for your visit. So please do come by soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Harry. The next speaker is Sari, followed by Rod Feingold.
My name is Sari Humer. I live on 269 Sabra Avenue in Oak Park, California, which is about half a mile from the Chabad house. I'm a resident of Oak Park for twenty-three years, and I've been to the Chabad about twice for a simcha. And I can just say that my beloved neighborhood became more beautiful since Chabad is there. In lieu of talking, I'll read a letter from Toby Love, my friend who couldn't be here for medical reasons. She expressed her opinion, requested, I'll read it. So this is Toby. I'm a member of Temple at Chaim in Thousand Oaks. However, I've attended classes and lectures and services at Oak Park Chabad since it opened. I've watched it grow and marvel at the need it fills in the Conejo Valley. Not only does it serve the Jewish community, but it greatly contributes to the community at large with the friendship circle and other outreach programs. When I found out that there is a problem with granting Oak Park Chabad a permit to increase the number of people allowed to pray on Shabbat to one hundred and forty-five, the number allowed by the fire department, I was dismayed. How could this happen? It can't be about traffic, because most of those who attend the prayer service walk to the synagogue. The small percent who drive do not park in residential areas. I admit that I do not know what complaints have been brought up, but I cannot imagine that a group of religious people walking to their place of worship can be a nuisance or threat to anyone. Unfortunately, the only reason I can see at the bottom of the opposition is antisemitism. I hate to even say this, because it would be so repugnant if it were true. Would these same people be objecting if this were a church? I hope you will consider the true objective of those who oppose raising the number of people who can practice their constitutional right to pray on their Sabbath. I hope you will search your heart, mind, and conscience, and do what is right. In the postscript, she writes to me, and now it's after the events of the vandalism in the Chabad shul, and now it seems that I was right about antisemitism in view of the graffiti spray painted on the building. She asked me if I could read this letter and add that rather than give into the wishes of people who would do such an evil thing, it will show what is.
Sari, thank you, your time is up.
She's just calling for a day of healing and cleaning and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Rod Feingold, followed by Tom Bregman.
Thank you, Commissioner, fellow commissioners. My name is Rod Feingold, I live at 5909 Conifer, and that is the house that is right next door, closer to Chabad from Sim. It's a unique house because not only am I almost directly across the street from Chabad, but when you're driving down Conifer, there's no legal parking on Conifer because of the bike lanes. But it does open up and become legal parking right at my house. So my house is the first spot that someone that was driving to Chabad from Cannon would be able to park. I can say in the last two years, I've never seen anyone ever park in front of my house going to Chabad or on our street. Now, there's only four or five homes on our street before it gets to the school where the parking is. And I haven't, I'm outside all the time, I speak with the neighbors. Of all the neighbors on Conifer, right before you get to the school, no one has said to me that there's a problem with Chabad. If anything, it's a positive influence on our neighborhood. I like to see people walking by, the Jewish people coming by to pray. I think it's a very positive influence for myself and my family. We absolutely love it. Visually, Chabad, I can see it right out my front door. I can see it right out my living room window. It's one of the nicest homes in the neighborhood, so there's no visual impairment on the neighborhood at all. The landscape is very nice, the lighting is very nice, it's a very nice-looking home, and you've seen it from the pictures. I've had friends visit my house, and I've told them, "Look, there's Chabad." They said, "That's Chabad?" They're shocked that that's Chabad. Also from my house, since I'm so close, and I think I'm one of the only homes that can look out their front window and see Chabad, I can't see the enclosed patio. The trees cover that. So visually, there's no visual impairment from Chabad at all. As far as quiet enjoyment, my quiet enjoyment as a neighbor right next to Chabad has never been impaired. I've never had to think once that our quiet enjoyment has been harmed from Chabad being there. So we, me and my family, we support Chabad, support this additional use and hope that it is granted. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Bregman, followed by Rabbi Sapo.
He spoke already.
He's here?
He spoke already.
Okay, okay. Then we're followed by Eddie Jacobs. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Tom Bregman, I live at 286 Parkview Drive. Parkview is the street that runs into Conifer right at the Chabad. I am Jewish, but I do not attend Chabad, so I'm not here because I'm affiliated with Chabad in that I'm a member. I'm here because I'm a member of Oak Park, a member of the community. And I'm here to tell you that Chabad is a good neighbor, they're a respectful neighbor. I believe they add to the sense of the community for me and for my family. We enjoy also, like other people have said, watching people walk to shul on Saturday mornings. We enjoy seeing the children playing when we're, sorry Rabbi, driving by on Conifer when we see the kids playing in the front of the house. We enjoy seeing that, too. Just a little bit of background about myself, I've been a vocal member of the community on other issues that I feel negatively impact our community, such as oversized vehicle ordinances. I've been very vocal on that, as some of the people here will tell you. I don't see Chabad as a negatively impactful issue, otherwise I would be speaking against it as well. In fact, I feel Chabad enhances the community. I'm a real estate broker in the neighborhood, and I know that when you're in proximity, walking distance to a shul, to a Chabad house, it's a benefit, it's a positive, it attracts a larger community. It perhaps even drives the real estate values up, because there's a desirability factor, people want to live within walking distance, because Orthodox Jews are not supposed to drive on Shabbat. So it's a benefit to live within walking distance, drives the property value up, it's supply and demand. Nobody has brought it up, but I think over the last sixteen years, perhaps the Jewish community has grown in the last sixteen years. So where the occupancy level sixteen years ago was sufficient, because having the Chabad has attracted a larger Jewish community, perhaps that number needs to now be increased because of the increased size of the community. All I can say is that any impact that Chabad has had on Oak Park and on me living in Oak Park, I feel has been positive at this point, and I'm pleased to have Chabad as a neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. The next speaker is Brian. That was Eddie, right. Brian, and then followed by Ross Gillis.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for my time. I have a unique perspective.
I'm sorry, can we?
My name is Eddie Jacobs, I live at 6473 Smoke Tree Avenue in Oak Park. Thank you. Through the years, I've handled the issues of the problems that the neighborhood and the neighbors have had with Chabad. And so up until two years ago, my job was a very easy job, it was a very boring job, actually, a very quiet job. And then on one Saturday when I was at services, all of that changed. And one of the neighbors who came down, a very angry neighbor, came down to the Chabad house and parked their car in front of the Chabad house and honked her horn and called out all sorts of insults. Kids are there, it was just a very distressing sight, really. But in that moment, my job changed, and I have to say for the worse, because after that, there was, the county was inundated with complaints, there was people watching, taking notes, they were recording us, they were doing all sorts of stuff. They were parking, recording us in a place where we wouldn't allow people to park if they were coming to Chabad. But they would sit there and watch us and harass us, and it was completely inappropriate, it was a form of harassment. We had to spend lots of money, we should have gone to other purposes. It was, and has been, terrible. And what I'd like the commissioners to take a look at and at least take into consideration is that, over the years of our record, of our clean record, and that recently, we've had whole lots of complaints. We've even had something called a retroactive complaint, whatever that is. Things that I guess weren't important enough to complain about at the time, but will complain about them now, because the county gets to investigate, charge the billing back, the Chabad gets billed for that time. And it's cost us a lot of money. So in closing, let me just say this. My unique perspective is that I am in that neighborhood, I go around, I deal with the The whole majority of Smoke Tree, Conifer, where these people live, I've talked to them, they have no problem, they're very supportive, they love what we do. For those people who are more neutral, and there are people who are neutral, we present no problems to them. And that's what I'd like the commissioners to take into account, that, what are we talking about? Two cars that are parking on the street? We're talking about twelve cars? We want a little bit of an increase? We're talking about a few more cars? Is that really an impact?
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
You're welcome.
Ross Gillis, followed by Rabbi Levine.
Hi, I'm Brian Raifelson. I'm a prosecutor for Ventura County.
I'm sorry, Brian, I had your card out of order here, thank you.
I work for the county.
Ross?
Yes, I live at 105 Smoke Tree Avenue. I live across the street from the Chabad of Oak Park. And we bought our house about six years ago, and we moved there for the Chabad. And I can tell you that the Chabad is a great neighbor. Ninety-eight percent of the time, there is nothing happening. It's quiet at the shul. There is nothing going on, and there's no parking problem on the street. I live at 105, that's across the street. The other neighbor at 99 Smoke Tree that has a house that abuts the Chabad, one of the two houses, wrote a letter for the MAC. And she wrote, "As far as noise," her name is Barbara Reddy, and she lives at 99 Smoke Tree. "As far as noise is concerned, they're very quiet, and they respected the neighbors, even building an enclosed patio in the back to assure that nobody would be disturbed. The only thing I heard on Saturdays was the sound of happy children on the front lawn after they worshipped." How bad is that? "As far as parking, most of the members of Chabad walk, so I didn't find that a concern at all." I miss, she moved in November, and she writes that "I miss my Chabad neighbors, they're wonderful, respectful people who don't really deserve all of this hassle." This is a land use hearing, but you have to take in consideration what Chabad is doing for that community, because these rabbis are truly inspirational. They get people to help other people. They get people to donate thousands of dollars to help developing disabled kids. They get people to help people in need. They get people even to go out and clean up the trails in Oak Park. It's terrific, and it's bringing people to the community. Now, we have to recognize that over this long period of fifteen years, there has been growth. Families like myself and the Medveds have come. We have to recognize that that CUP number wasn't a number that was set fifteen years ago. There has to be allowance for growth. If you keep the number at seventy, and you had a ten-year CUP, you're saying for twenty-five years, this community cannot grow. That's not reasonable. Remember, this is the only Jewish house of worship in Oak Park, and most of the people, eighty percent according to the parking study, are walking to shul. We're talking about a few cars, just a few cars. And I had to explain to my kids, "Well, why is it different that they can park for baseball and softball and soccer but not for the Chabad?" Well, it really shouldn't be different, and especially when you're talking about a few cars. I ask you to follow the recommendation of the MAC in terms of the CUP and granting the variance, and to increase the number to one hundred and forty-five.
I think I have about five cards left, six, and I'd certainly like to get through those before we take a break for lunch. So let's try to finish it out. Ross Gillis is next, and then I have Rabbi Levine after.
Good morning, thank you for letting me be here. I used to live in Oak Park. I was a resident of Oak Park for a number of years. My husband and I raised four children in Oak Park. I used to live on Twin Springs Avenue. I did not give my proper address because I feel fearful after somebody wrote on the wall of my Chabad where I used to attend, okay? I also still attend there. I also attend the Chabad of Westlake. I also attend the Chabad of Agoura Hills from time to time. I attend the Chabad of wherever I'm at, at that particular time. I attend the Chabad of wherever I'm at, at that particular time. Everyone said everything that I had to say.
Excuse me, please. Commissioner, very good question.
You need to state your name.
Rosalyn Gillis.
Thank you, so we can identify it later.
Yes, thank you. Everyone said everything that I had to say on my paper. I'm not as a great orator as everyone else. I'm a simple woman married to a Chabad person that started as a simple person, growing more into my religion. I'm hoping to move back to Chabad of Oak Park where I can attend Chabad of Oak Park and not be that extra person if I choose to go there to stay at one of my friend's house so I can walk there. I want to feel that I'm safe in Oak Park when I go there. I want to feel that I have the liberty in a community to worship how I feel, and I want to feel that others can be welcomed there, and I don't want to feel that when I'm there or when I'm in Agoura, when I'm in wherever, I'm very emotional. Excuse me, I've lived there for many years. I'm not a good speaker. But to conclude, so other people can speak, I want to say that I hope that you will hear everybody here today, and you will grant what we ask us. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Ross. Did you say you owned that property at one time?
No, on Twin Springs? No, I was a renter. I owned a property on Pinion Street at one time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Name and address, please, Rabbi.
My name is Rabbi Yisrael Levine. My address is 6310 Acadia Avenue, Agoura Hills, California. Honorable members of the Planning Commission, I had a few points. I'm one of the rabbis at Chabad of Oak Park. Rabbi Briski had hired me about 15 years ago. At the time, I, with my wife and three children, we moved here, and we wanted to buy an Oak Park, but this was the only available home that we were able to purchase at the time. Today, my family has grown from three children to eight children. So when we hear discussion about organic growth, we're talking about just the families that began. They themselves had increased in number. I had a few points to say today, but there was a little bit of a shift in my emotion about 15 minutes ago, and I just want to address it. I heard the word antisemitism, and my heart dropped. And I heard the graffiti being mentioned, and I was hoping that it wouldn't be mentioned. And I felt the reaction on the right side here, and I just wanted to say that it's not something that we believe is antisemitic. It was an isolated incident, one individual. There's always a crazy man that is looking to express their hate. It's not something that, we've ever looked at it as an us or a them or a battle. We've always tried to extend ourselves to them to try to work it out as one community. And we were hoping to be granted in the last two years, a time that we can sit around the table and just talk about the concerns, but that was never the case. We were never granted that. I just want to read just a short letter. Rabbi Shlomo had mentioned about a young woman that had come to Oak Park Chabad this past Friday night. She writes, "To whom it may concern, thank you for considering the opinions of community members. I write to you as a resident of Oak Park who has lived a few houses away from Chabad for 14 years. I believe that Chabad of Oak Park should be permitted to host an increased number of people in order to continue to be the welcoming community organization that they are. Chabad's dedication to openness is a shining example of how Oak Park should strive to be. Growing up here, I've experienced a strong sense of exclusivity and insular attitudes from the residents. Here, people drive fancy cars from locked houses to faraway jobs, only interacting with their select group of friends. Young adults often complain that there is nothing to do and sit in front of the television for much of the day. I recently spent five months in Israel." I'm just going to conclude here. I'm going to skip a few paragraphs because I see the yellow light. "As a young adult," and I hope this makes sense, "I am at a point in my life where I'm deciding where I want to live. I believe in the welcoming communal nature of Israel. However, my family has made their life in Oak Park, and I do not want to leave them. I believe that I should not have to choose between my family and the community I feel wanted in."
I'm sorry, Rabbi, but you've gone over quite a bit of it.
All right, thank you very much.
I think we got the gist of the letter. Thank you. The next speaker is Stuart Greenberg, followed by Arlene Eggers. Name and address, please, Stuart.
My name is Stuart Greenberg. I live at 6523 Bayberry Street for the last 26 years. Just want to address two things here today. First, the distortions and some of the misrepresentations as some of the people in this community have gone around to the neighbors, many of living on Smoke Tree and some of the other adjacent streets. There's been a lot of exaggerations. It's clearly identified in the Acorn newspaper. Some of the quotes from Mr. Brad Lewis in the Acorn that's been published, quote, "Allow the expansion of a small residential shul into a heavy institutional use," unquote. Second quote, "Holding luncheons every Saturday, 52 weeks a year for 145 people, many of whom are driving in from out of town." That's not true. Three, create traffic and parking problems. That's not true either. You can have eyewitness accounts all day long here telling you that's not the case. Second point I would like to make is that we are part of a normal activity here in Oak Park. Other abnormal activities is the Oak Park Unified School District. But over the last three years, Oak Park Unified School District became an open school policy of encouraging students from out of the district. Approximately one-half of all students come from out of the district today from other areas outside of Oak Park. There's approximately 1,400 additional car trips every morning to deliver those children to school, and approximately 1,400 additional trips every afternoon to pick up those kids from school. That's an impact on the community. Are they facing the same, is Oak Park Unified facing the same kind of attacks that we are facing? Not sure that's the case. How about the soccer leagues? 15 years ago or 26 years ago when I moved in this community, we didn't have the soccer leagues that we have today, but yes, they create parking. Could you imagine the number of car trips for every soccer game? Possibly 30 car drives to sports fields every day for a soccer game? Take that on a typical Saturday where there's 12 games at any particular park in Oak Park, and that includes 360 cars driving in and parking around local schools and parks. That's a major impact. We are just a minutia next to that. So please, I respectfully request that you accept our request for additional occupancies so we don't have to turn anyone away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. Next speaker, Arlene, and then followed by Michael. Are you related?
Hi, I'm Lisa Robin, but Arlene Eggers had to leave, so she asked me to please read her statement.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
I am Lisa Robin. Arlene Eggers had to leave, and she asked if I could please read her statement.
Oh, so you're taking Arlene's time?
I'm speaking for Arlene, yes, but I'm speaking as Arlene.
Go ahead.
She lives at 404 Southridge Avenue in Oak Park. "My name is Arlene Eggers. I am an educator who has lived in Oak Park for 22 years. As you probably know, this past Tuesday, the Oak Park Chabad house was vandalized and defaced with the words, 'Get out of Oak Park.' From my experience, this was the work of an adolescent. As an educator, I can tell you that when you judge others favorably and show tolerance and respect, your children learn to be tolerant and respectful. When you act with compassion and loving kindness, your children learn to be loving and kind. And when you act with hatred and intend to destroy, your children learn to be hateful and destructive. To those of you who say we aren't against Chabad Jews, we just don't want too many of them in our neighborhood, please understand what you are teaching your children. To the Ventura County Planning Commission, I hope you understand that there is a bigger issue here than parked cars and patios. I ask you to please take the needs of Chabad of Oak Park into account in making your decision. Our children's eyes are upon you. Thank you."
Thank you very much. I only have two more cards. Michael Eggers?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, all right, thank you. And the last card I have for this group is Elina Herman? As I said, after this speaker, we're going to take a lunch break, probably 40 minutes. And then if any of the other people here who have filled out one of these cards and feel that they have something additional to say, you may fill out a card, white card, give it to the desk. When that's done, we will then hear from the homeowners at that time. And thank you for being patient. It's been a long day, too. Go ahead, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My name is Elina Herman. My address is 380 Tankville Lane, Oak Park. We became members of Chabad about three years ago. In the beginning, we were living in New Bay Park, so therefore we were one of those who were driving. And yes, sometimes parking on the streets, even though legally, but not as the rabbis ask us. After about like a year, we became observant, and for about a year and a half, since we couldn't move immediately to Oak Park in order to walk to synagogue, we were each Saturday spending time with our family friend, meaning cooking, bringing all the kids, toys, everything each Saturday, because that's how important to us, to be in the community. Thank goodness, a half a year ago, we moved finally to Oak Park and live in this community now. But what I wanted actually to say, even though it was said so much already, and obviously I share those thoughts, I want to tell people about my background. Myself and my husband both were born and raised in, previously Soviet Union. We were stripped from all our identity, and coming back to our roots, it's like, you know, it's like having for a person face transformation, because that's who I am. I was raised without anything, and finally, I understand who I am. And it's thankful for the Chabad, for their open arms, for anybody. Doesn't mean if you drive, not drive, doesn't matter. Just come and experience what does it mean to be you. And therefore, when people, you know, saying really, "We're not against Chabad," but, "No, I'm sorry, I disagree. I do see it as antisemitism," because I lived in a country which hate, which promote hatred, but covers it, and they're like, "No, no, no, everything is fine." But with each moment they get, they strip you. So therefore, and especially when I sent my letter, it was before the graffiti, and the graffiti proves my point. And I do not want to be watched. I do not want to be counted. I'm not a sheep, and it will not happen again. The Holocaust, done. I want to go safely in my shul with my kids, and if God grants me more kids, I don't want to be additional number which disturb me from coming to my shul again and raise my kids with the identity, something that I never had. And I'm thankful to this country that opened, that was based on freedom. I do not get it granted, you know, without consideration. I cherish it. I really understand what it means to be free. Thank you."
Thank you very much. That's the last speaker card I have. We'll take a lunch break from 10:00 to 1:00 to 1:30. That's four 40 minutes, I guess. And then we'll pick up any other cards from this group, and then we'll get into the homeowners. Thank you very much. You okay? All right, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. For those of you who are back with us, welcome back. I have no additional cards from the applicant, so we're going to go into the cards. We have a presentation of those who are in opposition of the requested action. And the same problem with these cards with the other cards. Some people indicated support, and they don't really mean that. So I'm just going to ignore what you said about support. Just speak and, you know, give your testimony. I'm not going to count that support because I don't know if you're supporting the--
We're supporting your recommendations.
--the recommendations of the Planning Commission. Then state that when you get up, too. And these are the order I received them in. The first is John DeShane. Please come up and give us your name and address.
If it's okay, John DeLuca's going to just hold the boards up so that you guys can see them. They're 20 by 30 blowups. Great. Can I go ahead and start? I am, by the way, supporting your staff's recommendations. Okay, great. "Good afternoon. Glad I didn't have to get out my good evening script, and thank you for taking the time to hear our concerns. My name is John DeShane, and I live on Sunny Vista Avenue in Oak Park. My address is 40. I am one of the representatives of the Media Creek Neighborhood Alliance. We have constructed a petition which in essence is a declaration against the expansion of the occupancy at the Chabad house and a disapproval of the illegal addition." First, before I go into that, Andrea, you did a really great job with your presentation. I could have saved a lot of time today. But first, let me give you a brief geography and makeup of our community. This satellite blowup is a sharper representation of a document you may have been given that shows the proximity of the residents to adjacent homes and also its proximity to open space. An image composed like this might lead you to imagine that space runs indefinitely to the west, but when in fact, it's only a slight strip of land. And beyond the edge of that frame, there's a section of our community which many of here today reside, including me. The large circle, the large circle represents a quarter-mile radius that encompasses the Chabad residents. At the bottom, you see the border of Oak Park and LA Counties. We are close to that border. To the left is a large open space spanning two-thirds of a mile, all the way to Linderow. And on the right, we see a yellow-shaded line that is Cannon Road, which is the main thoroughfare in and out of our community. The purple shaded area is of Oak Park Unified School District where the applicant currently has a month-to-month parking contract. This is the neighborhood most affected. This is my neighborhood. Over 370 individuals have signed our petition against all modifications of the CUP. This image that is now before you represents the households in blue who have signed our petition. I will let this image speak for our community. John, can you hand that to them? Maybe they can pass that around and live around. Oh, you do? Okay, great. You know, I was here in 1994. I know what I heard. I know what the Chabad house was supposed to be. I know what was supposed to happen when it grew, that other Chabads would open up in other neighborhoods and that things could be spread around. I left that meeting feeling as though I was, you know, concerned. Anyway, I know from experience now, what only speculation in 94, that anything other than a small neighborhood steeple with local residents who walk and which operate on only a Shabbat and minimal Michtavah use is all that is appropriate in our small residential neighborhood. We appreciate the tremendous work the Planning Department staff has done. We agree with the recommendations and ask that you follow them with just a few clarifications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John DeLuca, followed by Lenora Lewis. I'm sorry, Mr. DeShane, did you wish to enter that petition into, that you have--
I haven't.
--as an exhibit? If you do, we keep it.
That's fine.
Okay, would you give it then to the--
Actually, we did add a cover letter that basically requests that you remove the physical signature so that in case it gets reproduced, that basically all, for fraud reasons and whatnot, that all the people that signed it, you know, people won't have their addresses and their names and signatures. So it's just that they can authenticate it before they do any kind of, you know, any kind of replication, just for security purposes.
Okay.
Before we agree to that, I'll have to get a weigh-in on county councils, since it's a public record.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, the signatures are there for authentication, but we just need to make sure that people have, you know, secure--
Well, I'm just worried about redacting something that's a public record. Robert?
It would be a public record subject to the Public Records Act. Under the Public Records Act, that type of information would not be deemed at first blush. Under the Public Records Act, that type of information would not be deemed at first blush a confidential information or privileged information. So petitions of this nature, where people are petitioning their government, would be deemed a public record, and any reason to redact would have to be ordered to us by a court seeking us to stop that removal. So I guess the proper procedure would be for the county, if requested to produce that information, would contact organizers who had put the petition together, to ask them if they would like to petition the court to protect the privacy and names of the individuals on that petition. But unless we have that, it would be public record.
Okay, so, John, what do you want to do?
What you want to do is submit the names, and then if somebody wants authentication, you have the signatures. We don't have the names here, other than--
Submit it later?
Yeah, we'd like to submit it later.
All right.
If you want to consider today, you better submit it.
Come up to the speaker and state your name and--
I didn't want this to be part of my time, but after we submit it today, if we do come up with something from a lawyer, we can submit that immediately afterwards, correct?
That is correct.
Correct?
That will not count against your time. Okay, Mr. DeLuca.
Hey, thank you. My name is John DeLuca, and I live at 5832 Conifer Street in Oak Park. As Mr. DeShane just mentioned, we do appreciate the tremendous work the Planning Department staff has done, and we commend them for it. We agree with their recommendations, and ask that you follow them with just a few clarifications. On page seven of the Planning Commission's staff report, it states that if the variance for the illegal addition is not approved, the Habad has 30 days to remove it or forfeit the $1,000 surety deposit. We ask that you include a method for ensuring that this illegal addition be removed within a reasonable time. Currently, the loss of the $1,000 surety bond doesn't do that. And since the applicants have stated they, yes?
We have a pause of time. We're trying to catch up with--
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you saw page seven of thirteen of the petitions, and then we have other numbers here, so we're trying to track it.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's on page 144.
123, you said.
123. Okay. Compliance agreement, is that the one?
Compliance agreement, was that what you were speaking to on that page seven that you--
Yes, it states the variance of the illegal addition is not removed.
Okay, thank you, we have it.
Or not approved, sorry. Did you say continue?
So what is your request?
Oh, that we ask, well, it's saying that it would be removed within 30 days, or the Habad would forfeit the $1,000 surety deposit, and we're asking that you include a method for ensuring that the illegal addition be removed within a reasonable time, because currently, the loss of a $1,000 surety bond doesn't do that. Since the applicants have stated they do not intend to leave the site property, a daily fine which merely accrues as a lien on the property would not be an incentive for removal of the illegal addition either. So just something that would ensure that that would be removed if not approved, other than just the forfeiture of the $1,000 bond.
I'm not sure I really follow that, maybe one of my lawyers here could let me know.
The compliance agreement that is referenced there on what is marked as page 123 of the staff report, those, what's included there does not mean that the applicant can pay $1,000 and keep the illegal structure. So these are penalties above and beyond the normal abatement that we would do to remove an illegal building. So there's nothing in here that would not, this doesn't say or imply that you pay $1,000 and get to keep an illegal building.
But let's say the 30 days goes up, then they forfeit the $1,000. How do we assure, ensure that they are going to remove the facility if the variance is denied?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, at that point, it would be just another zoning violation, subject to our administrative citation penalties in the zoning ordinance. So we would decree it like any other zoning violation. But in this particular case, there's a specific agreement that there's some specific initial penalties if what's supposed to happen doesn't happen.
This is in addition to filing the--
That's fine, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. DeLuca.
Okay, just one other point. The Planning Department staff, on the proposed hours, occupancy, and parking figure, something we're also asking to have clarified, there is no time specified hours for the title, study sessions, meetings, tours, and mikvah use. And it just says 10 people maximum. I believe in your staff report, it was page 17.
That is correct. We're not proposing any time limits for the 10-person minimal use of the facility.
Okay, and so we feel that that hours should be amended. We feel that 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. is reasonable, provided there are limits set, because currently 10 people maximum leaves the door open for a great deal of extended use.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Next speaker is Lenora Lewis, followed by Wendy Banny?
Hi, my name is Lenora Lewis, I live on Medea Creek Lane in Oak Park. I'm here today as a member of my Oak Park community, but I'm also here as a Jew. My uncle was hidden in the basement of a Dutch farmhouse for two years during World War II, hidden from the Nazis. My grandparents, I never met them, they never got out of Germany. I understand the emotions and anxiety that we are all feeling here today, but let us stay focused on the facts. We'd like to thank the planning staff for their tireless efforts, and each of you as well. We urge you to follow the recommendations of the planning staff in denying the zoning variance that violates rear zoning setbacks for Oak Park. We ask that it be removed prior to any approval of a new CUP. We urge you to follow the staff recommendations in keeping occupancy to 70 persons maximum. The applicant has stated that the fire department has approved an occupancy of 145, but the fire code doesn't consider location of the occupancy, or that the building is a single-family residence being used as a place of assembly. The factor of seven used for this calculation is the same factor used for an open area of a nightclub or a waiting area at a restaurant. It's applied whether the building is on five acres with onsite parking, or on a residential street in a small neighborhood. The fire code is not the only factor to consider. We ask that you make sure that the hours of operation are specific and limited to what is appropriate in our small residential neighborhood. On-street parking for soccer and softball is not an issue. The users have a facilities contract for onsite use with the school district. The soccer is a club team, not ASO. Softball is only under eight girls, and all parking remains onsite. The county has stated that approximately 50% of attendees walk. That means approximately 50% of attendees drive. When you add the bar mitzvahs, which may take place each Saturday, the traffic and parking are indeed an issue for those of us in the neighborhood. It's enforcement that is the crux of all the problems that arose in connection with CUP 4848. The trash issues are documented with multiple violations of large luncheons. Item 17B is essential. We've worked for the past few years with the county to make sure that rules are followed. We've spent hours learning county planning procedures and trying to learn the NCZO. My fellow neighbors and I are rule followers. We have sought only to have Habad follow the rules as the county laid them out. We've been characterized differently in the press, and even here today, but we would not have spent two years following the rules if we did not respect planning staff and commissioners. It is why we are here today. We urge you to follow the staff recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, Wendy Banny, followed by Jay Fernandez. I'm sorry.
What's the status of the petition? I like that circulated a bunch.
Okay, you are Wendy?
Wendy Banny.
Okay, thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Wendy Banny, and I, like many of those here, and those that signed the petition, live very close to the applicant. I live on Medea Creek, which is right around the corner from the applicant. I first want to thank the Commissioners for listening to the pleas of the homeowners in our small community, as well as the Planning Department for their detailed analysis of this variance major modification before you today. We are asking you to follow the recommendations outlined in the staff report, and reject the applicant's variance request and increased occupancy demand. However, there are some areas which we feel need clarification in order to make sure the new CUP is enforceable as intended. We are requesting that based upon the applicant's history of noncompliance and disregard for the conditions in the CUP, as well as the NCZO, that the CUP be renewed every five years, not 10 years. This would allow the community, as well as the applicant, to voice and remedy any concerns that they may have sooner rather than later. Next, based upon the numerous complaints that the county has received regarding the applicant, and the difficulty the community has had with proving said temporary violations, we would propose that language be added to the CUP reflecting the ability of the Planning Department to levy fines for one-time occupancy and parking violations. Since enforceability has been an enormous obstacle with the CUP, we are also requesting the language be added, proposing that a minimum of four to six random unannounced after-hours inspections, at least two during holidays occur yearly. This will confirm that the applicant is abiding by the conditions of the CUP, and allow county enforceability. Now, they have mentioned that the school district in our area has problems with parking, and that's true. In fact, they quoted it as saying, half of our school district is out of district, it's actually a third of the school district that are out of district, and there is a problem. And if you go to the MAC meetings, there are people there complaining about the parking problems, and I think starting in a couple of weeks, they're gonna have no parking signs there to deal with the problems. I would also request that a major modification variance based upon the growth of their congregation, that our neighborhood has not grown. If the applicant has outgrown their CUP, then perhaps they should look somewhere else that can accommodate their growing needs, and embrace a new chapter in their successful growth. If they choose to stay, then we, the neighbors, welcome them and ask that they keep their house of prayer a home, a shtible in our small community. We are asking the Commissioners as well to keep our neighborhood, this small community so many of us have grown to love, and deny the applicant's request for a variance and major modification, and as Mr. Newton had indicated, to get rid of the institutional use in our small neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, Jay Fernandez, followed by Jerry Fox.
My name is Jay Fernandez, I live on 45 Smoke Tree Avenue. I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I commend the staff for their hard work and adherence to NCZO. I respectfully ask that your decision, Commissioners, today reflect these findings of your staff. The supervisors approved the original CUP for 70 persons, although the staff report at that hearing indicated that the applicant had originally asked for more. We would not be here today if the applicant had been in compliance. The illegal enclosure is readily visible from both the trails along Medea Creek, as well as from Conifer Street. The trees do not always have leaves. The patio cover on its own violates the rear yard setback requirement. By the way, the wall at the rear of the property is actually three feet on Rancho Simi property, it is not the rear property line. As far as the absence of complaints, the original CUP issued in 1994 was mitigation for a notice of violation issued for lack of permits and use in construction in 1994. I have supplied documentation in your packet, under my name, in separate exhibits, that show proof that complaints were made to Linda Park's office, the Planning Department as far back as Ron Allen, the MAC Board, the CHP, and their consultant and Rabbi Dzerstsky admitted directly today that complaints were made directly to the rabbi himself. I have supplied copies of a website that indicates that the occupancy max was violated as far back as 2002. There is a notice of violation for the event in 2002, as well as pictures in that packet. I am a firefighter, I have served as a fire inspector for the city of Linwood. The same website has documented 400 persons at this site on Yom Kippur in 2008. I witnessed this event and conducted an occupancy count with another neighbor as a witness, as a witness, and documented over 360 persons on this site at one time. In fact, we found that the average occupant load on a non-holiday Saturday was in fact 130 to 150. Be advised, it was over nine months until a code enforcement officer conducted an official count. I don't know what took nine months for them to do a count after we'd submitted it. Unfortunately, the planning staff informed us that third-party verification was required, and took the word of the applicant that no violation took place on many of the complaints. How are you gonna enforce this? I also ask that before you issue any kind of zoning clearance, and including the CUP for this project, you assure that if the variance wasn't passed today, that the property comply with the code, and the addition be removed prior to any zoning clearance or issuance of the CUP. Thank you very much for your time.
Any question?
The rear wall of the property is not on the property line. It's actually three feet, because we have a letter that proves that, and I think that the planning staff can attribute that, or can speak to that. We have a letter from Rancho Simi District that states it. And I can provide that for you if you need it.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. The next speaker, Jerry Fox, followed by Brad Lewis.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Jerry Fox, I live at 5902 Briarwood Lane. I have lived with my family in Oak Park since 1984. Our main access to my home is driving west on Conifer Street from Canaan, passing by the applicant's address. Over 26 years, I have driven past this address, a minimum of 18,090 times, could times three kids, probably. So when the applicant began using this address, it appeared that they kept the use requirements of their CUP. But over the past several years, beyond the last two years, when they were good, the level of use and activity had increased so much to become a nuisance. But once they began to do their renewal process, and got complaints verbalized, then things got better for the last couple of years. I appreciate the level of details that the staff report and the condition of approval documents have addressed concerning the offsite parking. I'm also glad that you have addressed specifically that no additional demands will be made upon Conifer Street and the neighboring residential streets for parking. I have had duplication here, because I brought into the effect of the figure that my, Mr. Fernandez already spoke about, so I'll skip down. The staff report has two sections regarding reporting violations and complaints. On page 139, there is the public reporting of violations to the Planning Commission and/or the Board of Supervisors. Then, on page 147, there is a section, resolution of complaints, that has a whole nother section about talking to, the county shall be directed to the permittees, which all got changed this morning. But from that section, I would hope that we are given specific information now on a name and address for county for written complaints, other than just being a general statement in the document. And with the Board of Supervisors or the Planning Commission, also a contact, I mean, we know our Board of Supervisors, but who is our person for the Planning Commission to use as a contact? I would appreciate the specific information. I would also like to suggest that on 147, there be added statements regarding fact-finding that address a complainant and the permitty, so it's not just one-sided, because then it's just speaking to the Habad issue, not what the complainant's speaking about. Currently, the parking permit at Oak Park Unified District's on month-to-month until their August 17 meeting, when the board has it on their agenda for renewal and discussion of new fee structure. The permit application currently is in very generic form with little detail. Is the school district aware that they also have to allow signs for parking lots prominently placed, demarking 27 parking spots for exclusive use? Who's going to make sure that the parking agreement with Oak Park Unified is enforced? I hope you look at the big picture, and not just the little items that we're talking about, because it's very important to our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Before you go, do you have a copy of this new complaint changes?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's still just-- Yeah, it's still just to be specific for a name and a contact would be appreciated.
Great, thank you. All right, Brad Lewis, followed by Cynthia Townsley.
Mr. Chair, before we start this time, I've been in this county too long. I have to disclose that Mr. Lewis and I are in the Kiwanis organization in Ventura County and have worked on several projects over the last 10 to 12 years.
For a young man, Commissioner, you certainly are involved in a lot of organizations. Congratulations.
Just think I'm wanted in 20 states.
Yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Brad Lewis. I live on Medea Creek Lane in Oak Park. I was born in New York City, bar mitzvahed from a conservative synagogue in Rivendell, lived in Israel, did opan, which is a school for the intensive study of Hebrew at Kibbutz Gott, and worked at Kibbutz Gavap Brenner. In turn, I worked with and tutored my son, who is bar mitzvahed. I have been living in Oak Park for over 20 years. I am currently vice president of one of the largest service organizations in the Canal Valley. There is a word in Yiddish you may already be familiar with, and that is meshugana. The definition of meshugana is crazy. To permit Chabad of Oak Park this major modification in a residential neighborhood is meshugana. We are grateful to the planning staff for their work in crafting the report and recommendations, and urge you to pass them today. However, there are some areas we hope will be clarified. The county does not specify hours of operation or how many people can enter and exit each day. This literally leaves the door open for the unintended consequence of well over 100 people going to the Chabad mikvah, or for study sessions every day in our residential neighborhood. We ask that the CUP contain exact hours, such as 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM or 9:00 PM, hours appropriate for a residential neighborhood, and that the number of people during non-Shabbat or non-holiday hours be no more than 10 people each day, not each hour. We urge you to deny the request for the zoning variance to reduce the rear yard setback from 15 feet to six feet, allowing the illegally constructed 750-square-foot attached addition, which, mind you, was built for the large receptions and large luncheons, who set a precedent that could harm not just Oak Park, but all of unincorporated Ventura County. Let me close with a rabbi with a quote from Rabbi Briski to the Board of Supervisors in 1994. Rabbi Briski said, "As you weigh both sides of this hearing, you need to keep in mind that a denial of our application will unfortunately tell the Orthodox Jewish community that they need to sell their homes and look for a community elsewhere. I say to you now, as you weigh both sides of this hearing, you need to keep in mind that granting of the zoning variance and expanding the occupancy and days of operation will unfortunately tell the Medea Creek residents that if you can't live with this major expansion, then perhaps you need to sell your homes and look for a community elsewhere. We urge you to deny the request for this major modification and allow a CUP only after removal of the illegal addition. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Next speaker, Cynthia Townsley, followed by Louis Fischstein.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Townsley. I live at 44 Smoke Tree. I've lived there for 10 years. I do support the Planning Commission findings. I feel that the extension of the CUP to 20 years is an undue burden on the residents of Oak Park. As we've seen, since I have been here, I have seen abuses of the CUP almost like a pattern. I mean, they put up an eruv, E-R-U-V, it's some fishing line thing in the neighborhood. They did take it down after there were some permit issues, but that was my first eye-opening awakening of the constant, you know, expansion of the CUP. And I am not a person who normally complains about anything in the neighborhood, not even boats, cars, or trucks or vans or anything, but I do believe that what they have is fair. I don't want them to leave, but I don't want it to be expanded. It's, for me, it's a safety issue with more people on the street, and my daughter just turned 16 and took out our mailbox, so it's a safety issue for me also. But I do believe that what they have is fair, and that if there is an opportunity for them to open up another Chabad in Oak Park, that's fine with me if the walking is an issue. But I don't think it should impact just one area. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Louis Fischstein, followed by Jeff Schostrum.
Good afternoon. My name is Louis Fischstein. I'm a 30-year-plus resident of Oak Park. I am the closest neighbor to Chabad.
What is your address, sir? What is your address?
Oh, 87 Smoke Tree.
Thank you very much. Continue.
Initially, when the Chabad asked for a clean shtiebel, they got it. Rabbi Briski promised the community that they had venues for the other activities, weddings, bar mitzvahs, and what else, that they would not be held at the temple. No way. Ron Allen, who was the head of whatever, he told us that, he told the community, me and other people, that if you make any complaints against the Chabad, we're going to do nothing about it. You're on your own. The Chabad started out as an office building, then they remodeled and became a small temple. They had all their religious activities inside the house. All social activities were held in the backyard, in their backyard and my backyard. I lost all privacy. As the rabbi said, that someone played loud music to disturb them, that was me. No one would stand up for my rights. I had to do it myself. The Chabad showed me no consideration, and I showed them none. I played music to disrupt their weddings, bar mitzvahs, et cetera, for the past five, 10 years. The house was not built by their members. It was built by four Mexican nationals. I watched every nail go into that house. And the house is the ugliest thing I've ever seen. I'm sure that it has depreciated my property by a large sum. And I would like to see the property returned to its original, I'm getting too old for this, its original appearance with grass in the backyard. Thank you.
Sir, before you go, if any other commissioner have a question? Mr., yes, let me ask you a question. Has the covered patio reduced the amount of noise? Can you hear me? Has the covered patio, since it's been added, reduced the amount of noise that you're receiving from the building?
Would it reduce it? I suspect that it will because it's all enclosed.
So, it has been less noisy since the patio was, since that patio was covered, to you, for you?
Not really, because they have many children in their congregation, and whatever function is going on, little children tend to cry. And what do they do? They take the little children out and put them in the backyard for me to listen to them. So, it's a no-win-win situation. And they put in 100 and some odd people in the backyard. They have absolutely no consideration for me and my neighbors. When I went out of town and I didn't play the music, and I came back, my neighbors would say, "Lou, where's the music?"
Thank you very much.
You know, it's a lot of people to listen to.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir.
And I appreciate it if you put them all in that house and keep them there. I love that. They're very nice people, by the way. Individually, they're nice. Collectively, that's another story.
Thank you very much, sir. The second last, now, I have one here, Jeff.
Yeah, Schostrum.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got the same problem as the rabbi does with all the additional letters and things in the name. Anyway, I just, I came here, I got involved with this because my hygienist saw me on your Closed Circuit TV and saw that I had come here on the Cornerstone Discovery Church issue, and so she got me involved. While she was cleaning my teeth, she told me the whole story of what was going on, so I was a fairly captive audience, and asked me for some advice because they'd seen that I did this. And I have to commend the neighbors here, and especially Brad and Lenore Lewis. You've seen them quoted in the newspaper, and they've really stuck their necks out here in what could be an unpopular thing or deemed to be. It's being couched in a number of different ways, but it's what more of what we need in Ventura County, the individual people coming and speaking out. But I'm sure you guys don't want as many of us, but just a few of us. Anyway, my main trust of this, I agree with everything that they've said, I'm in favor of the plan. I would say five years on the CUP is correct. I was really startled by what Mr. Newton said, and I would think you Commissioners would be startled too, when he was saying, "You've set a precedent." If I heard him correctly, I may be paraphrasing what he said, but when he said, you know, "You've let it go this far," it sounds kind of like a threat, "If you don't give us this then..." And I wonder what the next step is going to be. It was my same concern with the Cornerstone Discovery property. When they start building it, once they get in, then they push more. They ask for this, they ask for this variance, they ask for this conditional use permit, and then they push it a little bit more, and then they come back and, "Well, we already built it, so now it's going to be a burden for us to take it down." And I just don't think that that's fair, and I don't think that's the way it should be in our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. The last card I have, yes, Commissioner Rodriguez has a question?
Just a statement. Mr. Schostrum, if I may, would you state your address, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's 815 Tierra Rahada Road, Simi Valley.
Thank you very much. The last card I have, speaker's card, is Forrest Andrews.
My name is Forrest Andrews, and I live at 243 Smoke Tree, and I do approve of the plan that the Commission had studied that had been put together. I appreciate that they took the time to really look into this. One thing that I wanted to say, it's really the reason that I'm up here, is I've heard a lot of impassioned statements here today, and I think we all have to look at the fact that these are good people on both sides of this. I don't think that there are any demons here. I really don't. And, you know, I've talked to a great amount of my neighbors about this, who are opposed to the expansion, and none of them want the Chabad out of our area, okay, and out of this particular site. I think that what they're looking at is that they don't want it expanded further. I think also, you know, we're looking here at 70 now. If we, if you were to agree to this 145 that they're asking for, I know there are many people who got up here and said, "I, you know, I don't want to be, you know, number 72 or 73." You know, in 10 years from now, you're going to be looking at somebody who's saying to you, "Well, I don't want to be number 145 or 146," pardon me. You know, I think that eventually you come to a point where you have to have a solution to it, and the only real solution to it, clearly, is that they establish more shtieles. I understand why they like Oak Park, and I wholeheartedly encourage them to do that. That's how much I'm for, you know, what they do. I do think that, on the whole, they're really good neighbors. I think that they're good people, and there's absolutely nothing, you know, I do think that their presence in many ways does improve the community. You know, these are people that are committed to their faith, and I think that's beautiful. But I think that we have to look at the area in its totality. We've heard people talk about soccer and all of these things. You can't look at just one thing. It's all of it. It's all one package, and taking this larger than 70 people, I think pushes it just a little bit too far. Thank you.
Thank you much, sir, for your comments. Those are all the speaker cards that I have. I want to be sure we hear everyone and that everyone has something to say, especially if it's any different than any testimony we've received. So, without any other speaker cards, I would like to, at this point, we have the rebuttal by the applicant to the testimony that's been given.
Hi, honorable members of the Planning Commission. A few notes that I took while hearing the comments of some of the neighbors, and at first, I'd like to commend all of them for the tone, for the demeanor here today. I think it was respectful on both sides, and this is the way such discussions and debates, even ones with such passion, should take place. I heard some comments about they want the limitation of the 10, that we can't allow them to have 10 people there at any time, therefore, we need to limit those hours. And I was just thinking as I was hearing this, I have eight children myself, which basically means in my household, there lives 10 people, and we don't have limitations in my house as to when we could be there and when we can't be there. So, the idea of putting further limitations on the number of 10, I believe, is a little bit off the mark. I also heard a comment made about the eruv Chabad of Oak Park had absolutely nothing to do with the eruv. Just wanted to point that out. I also heard Mr. Lou Fischstein, who's been some sort of a friend for many years, we can call it friends. We have a relationship that goes back since we started here, and he's used the words, "There's been no consideration," that he's never had any consideration. Well, any time Mr. Lou Fischstein calls me personally, whatever he has asked for has been done immediately. At first, Mr. Lou wanted tree plants put up on the side wall between his house and our house. It was done. Then he wanted them trimmed. It was done. He wanted a light, and the light was too bright. He wanted the light shine a different place. Any call, immediate response that Mr. Fischstein has received from me. And then, it is his conversation with Rabbi Levine that brings about the building of this structure in the back because his complaint was too much noise. And as the question was asked of Mr. Fischstein, "So, does this now relieve the noise problem?" The answer has to be absolutely, because that's where the noise was coming from. So, there has been consideration. There always has been consideration, and we have individuals in our congregation assigned to those individuals. Any neighbor that has a complaint, speak, and it gets taken care of immediately, and that's the way it's always been. I heard a comment made about weddings. In its history, there has never been a wedding taking place at the shtiebel. It has never happened. We heard comments about bar mitzvahs. Well, we need to explain perhaps to the Planning Commission, when you hear the term "bar mitzvah," because perhaps you've been invited to a bar mitzvah, and you come in and there's this very large reception, and there's a band, and there's music, and there's dancing, and you picture a bar mitzvah to be this huge party. When we're using the terminology "bar mitzvah," we're only focusing on the religious aspect of the bar mitzvah, which is, the 13-year-old boy gets called up to a Torah scroll, places his hand on the Torah scroll, and makes a blessing. That's the aspect of bar mitzvah that takes place inside the shtiebel, and only for those who are members who come regularly to the shtiebel. There are no music played. We're not allowed to play music on the Sabbath. It's against our laws. We have no caterers. We have no florists. We have no dance floor. That's not the bar mitzvahs that take place. Although you may have heard us use the terminology "bar mitzvah," I needed to clarify. The bar mitzvah is simply a regular part of the service where the 13-year-old boy makes a blessing. And in the case that we have right now with the restriction of 70, that means that any of the individuals that live in Oak Park, even live on the block of the shtiebel, that come and have their bar mitzvah, they're 13-years-old, could not invite their grandparents to be there to watch their grandchild make a blessing. I've heard mentioned, once they get in, this was mentioned in comments too, that the way is that first we get in, and then all of a sudden, we push, and we- is that first we get in, and then all of a sudden, we push, and we push, and we ask for more, and we ask for more. In 15 years, our requests have only been the reverse. This is the first request of a major modification, we're asking for an increase, 15 years. Think how your lives have changed in 15 years, think how every community has changed in 15 years. I mentioned before, seven centers that we opened. We keep hearing they should open more? I'll keep opening more. That has always been our philosophy, and yes, there will be more shtebels throughout Ventura County, it will happen. But right now, in this community of Oak Park, there are Jewish families that would like to come and pray and disturb absolutely no one. They should have the right, the blessings of the county and of our government, to celebrate their freedom of religion, to come and pray. We have removed any conditions where we originally had our offices there. It was Chabad that removed that. We moved it to our Agoura Hills location. We had classes there, we removed it. In fact, if you look back in our history, the original CUP 4848 allowed an expansion of the facility even greater than what we built. And when we applied for a permit for a mikvah, in exchange for the mikvah, we took further restrictions upon ourselves of the activities that can take place at the shtebel. So our history does not show that we came in and all we've done for 15 years is demand more and more and more. And by the way, 15 years ago, when we stood here, the neighbors didn't come and say, "Yes, we want them 70 as a fine number." They stood with the same opposition. "No, this is not the place for you. Go somewhere else, not in this particular neighborhood. Go somewhere else." Well, we can't go somewhere else. This is where we live. This is where a community has surrounded themselves around the shtebel. What does the word shtebel mean? Shtebel is a Yiddish word. It means a home. A home in which the congregation themselves gather together, buy an additional home outside of the home they live in, and that is where they designate their place to pray. That's what this is. And finally, and last, and I'll close with this and pass it on to Rabbi Shlomo. We heard the question of the only real solution, and why the 145 number. Chabad of Oak Park has no plan suddenly, if you grant them their request suddenly this Saturday, to go from 70 to 145. What we're simply saying is, this arbitrary number selected 15 years ago, that was perfectly fine for us then, needs to be changed. We don't need 145 people this coming Sabbath, but we also no longer want to have video cameras in our faces as we walk to pray, waiting for there to be a violation, to call in the county and call the sheriff's department, that has to stop. And the only way that stops is if the county selects a number, not arbitrarily, but picks a number that the fire code says is the maximum occupancy. This way, the statement to from the county to Chabad, if as they claim, "We're going to come back here in five years or 10 years and ask for more," is, "You cannot legally have more." That is the only way to select a number that satisfies all. I'll pass on the remarks now to Rabbi Shlomo.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the commission. In no particular order, I would like to begin by highlighting a point that I didn't make earlier, and that is to the Oak Mac's findings at the Oak Mac hearing. They are the feet on the ground, if you would, representing the residents of Oak Park. Few of those members who actually were from those, that were not the greatest advocates of Chabad necessarily, before the hearing, went door-to-door, interviewed some of the closest homes in the neighborhood, and the immediate eyesight of Chabad. And at the end of the day, despite what you've heard here today, and I would rather, as Rabbi Briskie commented, everyone's been very respectful, so I don't want to kind of go down a shopping list and go through it, but I do want to point to that, that we did get a strong vote of confidence from the members of the MAC after doing a tremendous amount of due diligence. Regarding the petition, it is a very, very impressive number of people that signed a petition. What they signed and what they were told before they signed, I can't address. What I would like to highlight is just one example of my question to the value, not to the validity, but to the value of this petition. I'm going to admit this in a moment for you to have. This was given to me last night by a neighbor, the Third House Inn on Smoke Tree. Doesn't say his address, but where? Oh, 139 Smoke Tree. So it's the Third House Inn off of Conifer. I don't know the gentleman myself. To the Ventura County Planning Commission, my name is Bob Shaver, and I have resided at 139 Smoke Tree Avenue for the last 19 years. I am not a member of the Chabad synagogue. I felt it was important to let you know that in the last couple of months, people came by my home asking me to sign a petition against Chabad. What they presented to me was alarming, and therefore I agreed to sign the petition opposing the Chabad CUP application. I have since done some research, had a chance to get to know the real facts, and have come to learn that some of what was presented to me was, at best, a gross exaggeration. I have requested that my name be removed from their petition, and I am in favor of granting Chabad their application. I live just a couple of houses away from Chabad synagogue, and I do not experience any of the negative impact that these neighbors are describing. I trust that Chabad will continue to be a good neighbor. Thank you for taking my recommendation into consideration. So again, what was presented, I don't know, what I could say here today is that you have many letters that people sat down and expressed their feelings. You've had a tremendous showing here today. We have 15 years of a clean record, 15 years. Most of the violations that they're referring to, besides for the few that were retroactive going back quite a few years, happened in the span of three or four weeks, if I remember the calendar correctly. We stubbed our toe. I have another question, rhetorical question. We have renewed our CUP twice, every five years. The renewal was a public hearing. Many of those here today opposing Chabad lived in the community back then. If we were such terrible neighbors, where were they? What have we done that would trigger such a passionate concern for our credibility and the contribution we make to this community? I am hearing mixed messages. I'm hearing very nice words, but not one of them have ever knocked on my door and said, "Can we sit down and talk?" I have personally gone to some of their homes. The day after the MAC hearing, Mr. Jacob standing behind me reached out to one of them, said, "We want to sit down, and we're told there's nothing to talk about, we're going to fight a good fight, and then we'll talk." So we have a clean record before those few violations in a matter of three or four weeks, and since then, we have a clean record. We've been renewed twice, as I had said. So I don't understand where this would be coming from. Regarding receptions, I'm not sure what anyone is referring to. Large receptions, just again, a little bit more of the Jewish vernacular, if you would. On Saturday after services, we offer a kiddush. As you can tell by my girth, we like to sit and eat. So after services, we have what we would call a kiddush, like a light lunch. Half, or a third of the people, I don't have an exact study, go home to their families. Many are there by themselves from, you know, 10, 10:30, 11 o'clock till 1 o'clock or so. They leave as soon as services are over. Another bunch of them just sit right inside the synagogue. We take the tablecloths off, we move the books, and they sit there. So maybe 25, 35% sit in the back patio and relax on a Saturday afternoon for about an hour, and that's what we're talking here about when we refer to large receptions. Regarding property value that was mentioned a few minutes ago, the closest house to Chabad, one closer than Mr. Lou's, the actual corner house, right next door to Mr. Lou at the corner, Smoke Tree and Conifer, sold in November and was bought by a wonderful young couple who have no complaints against Chabad, they could not be here today, absolutely no complaint, paid almost asking price in November 2009, at a time where houses were not going at a premium, right next door to Chabad. And he would state that he has no issues with Chabad. I think everything else has been said, I just want to refer back to what I said earlier. We've been good neighbors, we have a right to pray in our community. We're not busing people in where the locals are saying, "We don't want you taking up our parking spaces from the valley, or from Agoura Hills, or Thousand Oaks." What we're asking for is for residents of Oak Park be allowed to pray in their synagogue in Oak Park, based on a number that zoning would consider safe. Thank you for your consideration.
Before you leave, Rabbi, I don't expect you to respond to this, but Mr. Fernandez has stated that Mrs. Shaffer does not appear on the petition.
He was taken, he was...
Taken off a month, two months ago.
I mean, I can't go through all those names at this point, but I just want to know that's his, that's his comment.
That's Mr. Shaver's comment, and he had his name retracted from the petition two months ago.
And he gave us the letter to hand in, so...
Okay, well, I just wanted to let you know, I'm not taking sides on this.
A lot of things have been said today.
Yes.
I can't, we're going to...
Thank you very much, Rabbi.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman Molotov, members of the commission, John Newton, just a couple of points by way of rebuttal. The rear wall is three feet onto the Rancho Semin Recreation and Park District property, and the title to the property includes an easement granted by Metropolitan Development to allow a three-foot encroachment of the wall and the wall to remain between the parties that was an agreement in 1982.
Do you want to submit that as an exhibit?
I sure can. So, the statement's correct, but it's been agreed to between the property owners that it's all right. And then, by way of, obviously disagreeing with the request of the opponents, that the staff recommendation to deny the variance is the proper way to go, I hope I've given you enough reasoning and rationale that would help you make the findings of the variance on the basis of this very unique property. Probably the most important thing to me in that regard is your ordinance sections, those three pages I showed you, where there is at least an inconsistency, and at best, there's probably a conflict between the definition of a setback relating to property lines, the intent and purpose of setbacks being separation of buildings, and in Matrix where the setbacks are established, neither mentioning property lines or buildings. So I think the intent and purpose is what carries the day here, the separation between buildings for all of those reasons, and where that enclosure exists, there are no buildings to be impacted on either side. It's open space that will remain open space forever. I think that concludes it. You've heard testimony, I think, from both sides that the enclosure, probably more expensively constructed than needed to be, but nevertheless, it's there, has solved a noise problem between a neighbor. And the counting's process isn't always been, all the years that I've worked with it, on both sides of the fence, the procedure has always been compliance, we're seeking compliance, not punitive action. The method of compliance in this case is to approve the variance, if you see that there's value to the enclosure based on the type of use. And we would encourage you to support the variance and support the applicant's request for an increase in occupancy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next, that's all, unless any questions. The next item on the agenda, closing comments by staff.
Just a couple of clarifications. One is the definition of setback, as stated in the noncoastal zoning ordinance, and I just want to clarify this real quickly. That is the minimum distance by which structures are to be separated from the boundary lines of the lot on which they are located. So that's, I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out. And also, Commissioner Rodriguez, you had asked for a clarification on how that 145 and the 128 as a capacity came about with the fire department. When we went out to the site to do the site inspection for this project, the fire department was there too, Larry Williams attended, and the first thing he said was that the 128, 145 was not the number at that point, we were focused on 128. And he said that 128 is not the fire department's issue. In fact, fire would support more than 128, most likely, and that any limitation on that number, less than 128, was a planning issue and something that we would need to determine if that was compatible or not. And that is what we have done. There's an occupancy load factor, the OLF, for each of those areas, the nursery, the prayer room, and the patio enclosure, they each have different rates, and I can go over that with you if you'd like, but just based on the rough, well, not the rough analysis, but the preliminary analysis that has been done as part of the fire department's review, they came to a total of 150 people for the areas that are not included within the variance. So if the project as proposed by the applicant were to be approved, there could be potentially, according to the fire department, an allowance of possibly up to 200 people. But they haven't considered yet that there would be the elimination of aisle areas, podium, anything like that. There are certain exclusions there, and that would be reviewed. Any fire department clearance needs to have, it needs to be done prior to the issuance of a zoning clearance. So 128, 145, 70, all those numbers, everything would need to be reviewed by the fire department again for that really detailed look before the zoning clearance for use inauguration would be issued. And that is all that I have. If you have any questions, I'm here, and Brian and Kim as well, and Tricia.
If I may?
Yes, certainly, Commissioner Rodriguez.
So the fire department was on site, but not within the premises?
They were.
Oh, they were?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Westen?
So we have several numbers we're trying to deal with here, not counting the parking issue. So based on the planning OLS factors, that's how we came to the 70 number, is that correct?
The 70 was based on the fact that currently what we have is approximately 300 or 3,000 square foot structure, 3,200, then that 750 square foot addition. As it is now, we're, that they are permitted to have 70 people on site as a maximum. And we cannot reconcile removing 750 square feet, which is a significant portion of the area that is now available, and we can't reconcile that with doubling of the capacity. So that is where the compatibility issue.
Now, what I'm trying to get at is, the original CUP...
Yes.
For the 70 was based on this OLS factor, and that's how we arrived at the 70 number.
That I don't know.
Okay. My point here is, I'm trying to find the support for all these different numbers. I understand the fire department sets a maximum, minus all that kind of thing. But what we're trying to deal with now is a CUP, and what restrictions are involved or not involved, and whether it's, and MAC has now recommended 128, staff supporting 70, I'm trying to find how we loaded that number. So I understand the recommendations, I'm trying to understand how we loaded either or both of those numbers, if somebody can explain that to me.
We have a lot of questions about the original permit. There's a lot of vagueness that we're trying to clarify as part of this modification right now, and so that's part of what made this experience in processing this permit difficult, as it was a fact-finding mission, and there were a lot of facts that possibly they existed at the time, but they weren't documented, and so we don't know where some of that information would have come from, and the 70 is one of those pieces of information.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from staff? Thank you, Andrea. At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing, and we will begin deliberations. Beforehand, I'd like to make a few comments. We have attempted to be open to hear anyone who wished to speak today. It's been a long meeting, but we want to thank you for coming and expressing your opinions and your feelings about this issue. I want to compliment, as many of you have complimented, Andrea, the staff, the Shabbat, and the homeowners. and the homeowners for trying to work together on this. There's no simple solution, and there's no solution that's going to please everyone, but I haven't heard anyone, and I remember, asking that the Shabbat be shut down and moved out. I'm hearing opposition toward its expansion, but I don't hear the other. I think Mr. Andrews made some comments, the last speaker, that I think are very appropriate, and that is, "This is basically a disagreement among honorable people on both sides." So, on behalf of the Commission, I want to thank you, no matter what the deliberations are, no matter what conclusion we come to, we do appreciate your involvement. And as one of the rabbis said, "This is America, and we believe in democracy, and this is part of the democratic process." So, with that, I will entertain any comments or motions from the members.
Commissioner Westen? Before we get too far into details, let's make something I think we can all agree on to keep the record straight, to admit Exhibit 29 to new conditions and Exhibits A as an apple through Triple Z that have been submitted to us. So, I make that motion. We accept those into the air.
I don't know what we do without the dean of the Commission, who has been here for, what, 80, 90 years? Anyway, thank you, Commissioner Westen. This is a motion and a second to admit these exhibits. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. To bigger things. Well, that's it. We're all done. No. We'd like to just take a break for about two minutes. Don't leave your seats, please.
...the appropriate administrative sanctions related to other miscellaneous zoning violations. Can I get clarification?
Let me go ahead and speak up, Chair Molitor, members of the Commission. I'm Tricia Meyer. I'm the manager of the Condition Compliance Program in the Planning Division. And there is, the reference to the compliance agreement with a $1,000 fine is only if they do not demolish the structure if the variance is not approved within 30 days. And that's because that's what's remaining in the surety deposit. Now, in the case of, you know, they don't, let's say that they don't demolish it and they're not approved the variance and they pay the $1,000, that compliance agreement right now, what it does is that it puts a stay on the civil administrative penalties that would be levied against that site, and it's $150 a day for the illegal structure because that's where it got to in the enforcement process. So that stay would then be terminated and they would start paying the $150 a day in addition to the $1,000 fee if they were to choose not to demolish the structure and it were still there after 30 days.
Okay, thank you. All those things considered, I too am having difficulty accepting the argument in support of the variance, and that's kind of where I'm at right now.
All right, Commissioner Rodriguez, you have difficulty out of supporting the variance, and I am too. I think Mr. Newton did an excellent job trying to lead us to where we could approve the variance. On the other hand, on this side of my brain is locked in all the conditions for a variance. And I think I have to agree with Commissioner Anstot and, at this point, Commissioner Rodriguez, that I can't support the variance. So at that point, do we have a motion on the variance?
Well, I think that's one of the findings that staff provided for us, so if we've taken a straw poll vote on that, then I think the next logical step would be the issue of the number of people.
And then, and then to the other, other staff recommendation.
Correct.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion on the variance?
I move the denial of the variance.
Do I have a second?
Clarification? I thought I heard Commissioner Wesner say that, that of which we speak is included within staff's recommendations in the overall.
He's saying we don't need to do that.
We don't need to do that.
Yeah, it's just a straw vote.
County Council?
I'd advise the Planning Commission not to take straw votes. If you want to take item number four on page 137 as a separate matter, you may do so. But I don't think straw votes are appropriate. You could also take all six recommendations as one fell swoop as well. But if you want to take number four separately as a variance matter, that's what I would recommend, make a vote on that, but no straw votes.
So at this point, we could address recommendation four based on the variance, or we could move acceptance of all the recommendations, including the negative declaration and all the other conditions too. So what is your pleasure?
I think, I think there are issues to be discussed regarding the rest of the conditions. Questions have been raised, for instance, regarding the ability to use the area that's now enclosed if the patio cover or enclosure is removed. I think we should discuss that. It's my understanding the current condition precludes them from any outside activity, and that would be what we would fall back on, is that not correct?
That is correct.
So then the question becomes, can they use any portion of the exterior of the property?
I understand, that's not part of any, well, if we did nothing but denied the variance, what would be the status of their use of the rear of the property? Could not use it for any purpose? Or the purpose of any of these?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, that's addressed by Condition 19B, which states that all outdoor areas of the CUP area are to be used for entering and exiting the site only. All CUP activities are to be maintained indoors only. And that's the condition that's analyzed in the environmental document.
What page is that on?
Page 149, as marked.
Well, you're all looking at, let me bring in on that one. Obviously, we've discussed the variance issue. To limit all the outside, just to egress and ingress, we're getting back to who's going to monitor this? Is five minutes enough time? Is 20 minutes enough time? I don't know how far we want to go in doing this kind of thing, just from my own personal, when I go to my religious facility, if I get there five minutes too early, am I going to be precluded from entering the property?
I'm not so much concerned with access and egress.
Right, but the use.
Yes, the use, your use in that, that area in the rear. The, I believe, we've been requested to remove item B.
Yes.
If we deny the variance.
If we deny the variance. And do we have to fall back on the original environmental document?
I would say that we're falling back on the environmental document that we prepared for this, so I'll direct your attention to page 213, where it talks about noise and vibration. And so it says that the project proposes a time extension and expansion of existing religious facilities, which would result in primarily indoor activities. Outdoor activities consist only of worshippers' arrival to and departure from the project site. So as far as noise and vibration goes in the environmental document, that is what we did the analysis on. We didn't do any sort of noise analysis on 70 people outdoors.
Where does that leave us procedurally?
I think that leaves you, if you, if you deny the variance, I think that you would have to keep in that Condition 19B. And then, if that's the way that the Commission wishes to vote, we could go back, or there could be going back and have a noise analysis done, additional analysis done, where we could actually take a look at that issue on what it would mean for land use compatibility and noise to have outdoor uses.
Somewhere in the, in the package or packages we receive from the applicant, whether it was oral or whether it's documented, I seem to recall information to the effect that the enclosed patio is in essence an area for the purpose of refreshments and dining and that type of activity, which, conversation aside, is a pretty dormant activity. It appears, what you're saying is that, that by denying, if we, if we leave 19B in, that you can't even use the backyard for the purposes of sitting and, and having meal or refreshment as a neighbor might in their own backyard. Is that what I hear you saying?
That's what she's saying.
But, hold on just a second, let me, let me find a...
You can only, you can only leave what the conditions say.
So I'm looking at the original permit condition and the permit condition that they've operated under this entire time. And the condition number three says the religious services and study sessions initially granted under this permit shall be restricted to the inside of the residence and in the following manner, and then it goes. But the original permit, the way that the permit was envisioned, that was heard by your Planning Commission and approved by the Board, was an indoor permit. So we're not doing anything other than enforcing of the conditions that were already there. The only different thing that happened is they inadvertently or illegally constructed a enclosed patio. And now that they've had the enjoyment of that for a while, and if it would be the Commission's desire to remove it, then we do have a problem with noise. The original permit condition said you need to contain your, contain the uses inside, and this permit also says you need to contain your uses inside. So, you know, it is in a residential neighborhood, and it is supposed to operate in a residential manner. And so if there was a way that your Commission could construct language to say that some reasonable use would be allowed outside, but not that 70 people would be outside every Saturday morning, because that typically wouldn't be a reasonable, compatible use in that, in that zone. So if, you know, you wanted to deliberate and try to craft some sort of reasonable use out there, I think that that would be appropriate.
Kim, if you look at part 19A, doesn't that address that issue? If, if it is possible, I would like to read that to the, to the people here. I'm talking about 19A on page 148, which says, there's 19A and 19B. 19B is one sentence that says all door, all outdoor areas of the CUP are to be used for entertaining, pardon me, for entering and exiting the site only. All CUP activities ought to be maintained indoors only. Now, number 19A says minimizing nuisance impacts. The permittee shall take whatever reasonable steps are necessary as determined by the Planning Director to prevent significant nuisance impacts from occurring outside the CUP area, which I'm assuming is the building. Significant nuisance impacts include, but are not limited to, noise, lighting, and glare. In order to determine the significance of the nuisance, the Planning Director may consider the number and types of neighborhood complaints and conduct inspections of the site and surrounding areas. Any questions about what constitutes significant off-site nuisance levels should be resolved by the Planning Director or other public agency, as the Planning Director may designate. So I think that solves 19B, because you could, if, if you take out 19B, you still have 19A, which can be used to monitor any complaints and noise.
I would just, I would take a moment, I need to take a moment to really review that language and review the environmental document at the same time, to see that we're comfortable in making the same amount of findings. So if you want to move on to another issue and let me look at it for just a moment, I think that I'll take just a few seconds.
And I'm not to put words in my colleague's mouth. Here's what my concern is. There's a natural patio, just like the other Commissioner said. Normally, the conversation you have with your neighbor over a cup of coffee after or before service. I don't want to get you or us in the middle of monitoring the rabbi talking to somebody over a cup of coffee for three or four minutes, and you're inundated with phone calls. How are you going to enforce it? How are we going to make compliance? Now, if somebody's out there doing things that most of us do on Saturday night in our own backyards, I understand the concern of the community around them. But where do we draw the line that the proper nexus between the religious activity and the reasonable use of a patio area, other than just entering and leaving the property? And I think it's a gray area that unfortunately we're down that slippery slope right now. And I want to be very careful, and I think that's your concern too.
It is. Okay. I guess I would assume that the rabbi can speak to anybody out there. When they start shouting at each other, it becomes a nuisance, and...
No more, no less than any other neighbor. Or a barking dog, or loud music, or anything else.
But then nobody may say anything, so there's no complaint and there's no problem. This 19A states there has to be a complaint, you know? In other words, the neighbors have to come in and say they've got a band going in the backyard and so forth, and that's, that's a complaint.
But 19B allows a complaint if somebody's just standing in the driveway, talking to somebody, or standing in the back patio, talking to somebody.
You mean 19B?
Yeah, it's, because it's only for entering and exit.
Right, right. If you use 19, 19B, backyard is useless, and that's not fair.
And in the front yard.
Well, the problem was, it was never analyzed in the environmental document.
Right.
Period.
Okay. Let's let the Planning Director do that, and let's go back. I'm going to suggest we go back to the recommendations, or if, if the Commission wishes to discuss the 70's number, or the other numbers of things, but we could go back to the recommendations and on page 136. And County Council, I guess it's all right for us to take recommendation by recommendation and vote on them, is that possible?
That is possible.
However, throwing a wrench into that, the first one says on the basis of the negative declaration, and that's what the Planning Commission, Planning Director's looking up now to see how 19A and B would affect the negative declaration. Yes, she said to take a few minutes, but we could, we could discuss something else if, if, if we wish, while she's looking it up. If you wish to discuss the numbers of people, the hours, I think these are, are things. However, they are in, if you support the existing CUP, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, if you support the initial, the 70 figure that the Planning Director and the staff is recommending, that's already in the recommendations. So by voting for the recommended actions, you are voting for the 70 maximum and all the conditions that the Planning Director has recommended. Am I on base there with that? Is that how you see it?
Okay, I'm rereading C, which is all the findings that we're going to base everything on. It's 130 through 135. And from my position, I still have a problem with the variance, but I'll leave that one aside because that's number four, that's a separate item. I can support all the other findings that the staff has made except for the 70, and here's my position on it. I don't know where the number came from. And given the size of the property, the number 70, and we've heard the 70, 71, and the 10 and all of that, it's a self-monitoring number. I understand the concern of the surrounding population is when it's 100, 150, 200. That's never the intent. I'm just trying to find what they're hanging their hat on. I understand what the Fire Department tells me, it can only be 154 people, because they've done the math, the size of the building, the access egress. I'm trying to find why, what the difference between 170 and 128, because MAC is recommended, 128.
I, I have a...
Back to Stan.
I, I just, the number 70 came from the original CUP, I'm assuming, and there, there must have been some, maybe we don't know what the basis is, maybe they thought that's what the capacity should be based on that CUP. That's what they could, that's what the Board felt at that time was something that would work.
But again, when I asked staff where that number came from, I got a classic lawyer answer. It could have come from here, it could have come from there. And I'm not being mean to you, Andrew, I mean, I know you're, you're put in a tough spot. Then fine, all I'm trying to, what is the basis? If it is the occupant loading statistic or some basis, that's all I'm looking for here? Instead of an arbitrary crecient number?
Are you looking for the reason why 70 was to begin with? Why, why 70 was the original number that the Board adopted?
Yeah, both. That and why staff's supporting it now, other than it was the original number.
Yeah, originally, yeah. So originally, why we support it is because that's what we proposed. The reason why we were supporting it now is because of it's a land use compatibility issue. We did believe that in reviewing the entire, the entirety of the evidence before us, that the doubling of expansion in this size in a residential neighborhood with all of the impacts that would be associated with it, I did not believe that we could make the findings that they, that it requires. And then I think that we laid out the case for that clearly in the staff report, so...
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Commissioner Wesner?
Sure.
This is the nexus I see with the 70. Back in the 90s, when this was first bought to the Planning Commission, it was bought by the applicant, correct, to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did not pass it because it didn't get three votes. That application then went to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors approved it. It's my assumption, it's an assumption, it's a good legal term.
Yeah. You know what that means?
Yeah, I know, okay. My assumption is that the 70 came from the original application that the Shabbat presented to the Planning Commission. That's what they said they wanted. If not, how would it have gotten in there? It had to come from them because the Planning Commission didn't put it in, because they denied it, went to the Board and they approved it.
First of all, it wasn't denied, there wasn't three votes, there was only three Commissioners, so you had had three votes. So it wasn't, while I'm asking is, is there, we have matrix for everything, all right? If you want Y parking spaces and you've got a building that's X size, you can't have that, you only can get, see what I'm saying? I'm trying to get a relationship number here, is, if we're not going to use the Fire Department, then what are we going to base this number on? Now, with the 70, that's why I'm asking, how did it come about? Is it based on number of square footages, use of the building, those types of things?
I think Kim's telling you, in addition to that, it's also based on the conflict between R1 and the associational use. Maybe they felt, or someone felt at that point in time that that was the correct number. Okay. I don't know.
So again, so it's a number pulled out of it here?
I believe so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesner? The decision makers 15 years ago had a judgment call to make as to whether, what, how many people to allow, and make, and they had to make the findings that are included in your ordinance, they're in the same position you are today. Is it's, the judgment of the decision makers, what constitutes a number which is compatible with the existing uses that surround this conditionally permitted use. So at that time, obviously, the Board of Supervisors made the findings that are required to grant a CUP at the 70-person attendance level. And now the judgment is in your lap.
Thank you.
If we voted to deny the variance and, and the enclosed area, which is what, 750 square feet?
Right.
It's no longer there. What in fact does that, what in fact does that have to do with the number that the Fire Department would or would not grant, or we would or would not grant?
Well, I think it...
I mean, it obviously shrinks the number.
Sure, it has the potential to invalidate any of those numbers. And then we, and then I think we're back to the original structure with, with whatever modifications were made, and that number of 70. I agree with you, I think originally, at some point, somebody made a decision based on R1 zoning that that number was a reasonable number for the activity, or activities that were to come. Because it's, it's real clear that the original congregants, the number of original congregants has grown significantly. A number of documents or testament, written testimony that we received electronically and hard copy today spoke to the fact that residents that are congregants there have encouraged friends from out of the area, that this is a great place to raise a family and to live, and in fact, people have moved into the Oak Park area, in part because of the, the recruitment, if you will, of, of other residents that would benefit from the Shabbat activities at that location. The point, point being that, that it seems to me that this site is maxed out or on the verge of maxing out, and the growth would dictate, as may have been represented early on when the first CUP was, was issued, that if and when it got to that point, that another, Shabbat would establish another location to continue to service community in, in similar residential zoning area, if that was the choice. So, I mean, Shabbat will do what they're going to do, and I'm not saying that, that their next move is to seek out another location for expansion. I think everything is being done there, and is occurring there, is great and wonderful, and I don't think anybody here is, wants Shabbat to relocate from that location. But growth has become an issue, both from the congregants, and as the rabbi indicated, his own family has grown from whatever it was, two to eight now, which is normal expectation. So I guess I'm troubled also, I'm troubled by the numbers, I'm troubled, I can deal with, I guess, with the, with the 70 the staff's recommending, but I'm still having difficulty dealing with the reality of, of the practicality of that, similar to Commissioner It may be that we don't have enough information to make, make that decision, I don't know.
Well, clearly, the environmental document, going back 15 years, is not terribly relevant today, I assume.
The environmental document's prepared for this, I believe. Is that correct, staff? Is the environmental document...
That is correct, yes.
Is current with this one?
Yes, with this major modification.
I was just going to add, Chair Molitor, just for clarification purposes, the document before you is a negative declaration. Basically, it's a finding that there's no, there's no evidence of a substantial impact caused by the project. If you look at the project description on page 193 and 194 of your Planning Commission package, it includes the major modification as described by the application from the Habbat of 145. So what was studied by the negative declaration was a 145. On page 194, part of the project description includes variance number LU090066, the 750 square foot patio. So I hope that that helps you kind of just conceptualize, these are the facts before you. The environmental document analyzed the larger request.
Thank you. So there's no problem with this, with the smaller request, because it would be covered up to 145 with the document?
That's a reasonable inference.
Assumption?
Based on, on those facts, yes.
Okay. So we don't have a problem with the environmental document as far as any of these issues like nine, like...
19B.
Yeah, 19B. That would not be an issue then, if that, if we change that and just, just eliminated that, or put some, something else into it?
I think maybe we need to put something else into it. The, the issue is, what the environmental document says is there's a general plan threshold for noise. And, and more than likely, no matter what is occurring on, on the back patio, if it's not enclosed, will not shift the general plan threshold. That's one issue. Then you have the land use compatibility issue of whether you can have 70 people in a backyard patio that's unenclosed every weekend, right? So they're, they're two different things. The, the noise and vibration issue says, in the environmental document, what we looked at, it says, the project proposes a time extension and expansion, and it is the expansion to 145, which the document analyzed would result in primarily indoor activities and outdoor activities, which consist only of worshippers' arrival to and departure from the project site. So that, that's all that we did the analysis on, even at 145. So we did say there would be, most of, most of what would be happening through the CUP, from the original CUP all the way through this one, would be happening indoors. So I think that there probably is room in this to craft some different language, that's what the permit approval standards gives to you, to, to craft some additional language, if you think some is necessary, to give a little leniency on 19B. But I do think that there has to be something there, given the environmental review and the project description and the recommendation that we've made.
So at this point, we either approve it as, as there, as is presented, which says no, which is 19B would be in effect, that's, if we approve it, it's that. If we don't want to... If we don't want to approve it with that, then we need some other wording in there that would handle that. So if we deny the variance, we could put in some language into 19B which would permit reasonable activities outdoors, depending upon the noise and lights and so forth. Is that how you see it?
Yes.
Okay, so just for an example, just to get the ball rolling, 19B would say, "All outdoor areas of the CUP area are to be used for reasonable entering and exiting the site," and drop the word "only." And here's my concern, again, I don't want the Ventura County Sheriff called because some guy takes an extra five minutes, and I don't think the sheriff wants to come. And then that reasonable would be left up to the planning director. So I'm just trying to...
Yeah, so you're just throwing out "only"?
And put in there "for the reasonable entering and exiting," and dropping "only."
There's no provision for utilizing the rear of the property at all?
No, but the big thing is the fact that "all outdoor areas," it says. Again, I think my concern is the same, it's so tightly written that somebody could call the sheriff. And I have no intention of allowing that.
Commissioner Vegas?
I think the, my conclusion of what's happened and how people have interacted on both sides of these issues, particularly as it relates to trying to create compliance and resolve issues, I think has, I think the rabbis and the congregation, in my opinion, have certainly done everything within reasonableness that could be expected. If in fact, we're able to craft something to allow some sort of reasonable activity in the rear patio area, I suspect that great efforts will be taken to make sure that noise does not become an issue, that would bring this CUP back potentially before this board or the planning director. That's just an assumption on my part, but that's kind of what I've gathered from all the testimony.
Well, since we're talking about reasonable people, how about if we give the planning director the latitude to discuss with the applicant and anyone of what that language would be? How does that sound? I think you can understand what we're looking at here. Or do you want something specific from us today?
I think it would be important that we craft some language, if you want to take a few moments recess and we could talk about them, but I think it's important that we adopt some, you know, the condition here today.
And just, Commissioner Wes, just one other point, you, on 19B, you said, "to be used for reasonable, but reasonable entering and exit the site," period. But that last sentence then has to come out, right? All CUP activities are to be maintained indoors only.
I have trouble with just egress and ingress. If you're going to allow them to utilize the back, that's a violation right there.
Okay. More suggestions?
Well, I think we should take a recess and work this over.
Okay. I concur. Is that going to cause any problem if we all deliberate without the public, or...
Well, I think that you've given sufficient direction to the planning director and her staff so that they can craft the language without us having an outside of round act meeting. So I think there's sufficient direction, we don't need all four directors to be hovering over Ms. Prohart's shoulders to see what she's going to craft, and craft what she has, and we'll just be back after the recess and we'll put it before you.
Okay. Tim, how much time would you like?
30 seconds.
How about 10 minutes?
How much?
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
Thank you. Let's take a 10-minute recess.
Peace out of everybody in the lobby. You're welcome.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, but it's based on, yeah, it's based on regulation, fire regulations, and we have good business. Outside--
Is the planning director ready?
Yes, we're ready.
All right, then, I'd like to call a meeting back to order and give the floor to the planning director.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, per your direction, we've discussed and preempted some alternative language for nineteen B, and we've discussed both with neighbors and the applicant. And here goes. Permitting may use outdoor areas of the project site so long as such use is reasonable, comma, similar in intensity to a residential use, comma, complies with the general plan noise limitations, comma, and does not constitute a nuisance. In addition to this general standard, the outdoor area may be used from 12:30 PM to 2:00 PM on Saturdays for small gatherings, period.
That would meet the requirements of the negative declaration, too?
I believe we're not too far afield.
Okay. Now--
It was consensus with the folks that we had in front of us. So some folks from the neighborhood, yes, and some folks from the Habad.
More importantly, as long as it's our consensus.
Now let me try not to muddy the waters. If we approve the variance, does that still apply? Or not?
No.
Nineteen B.
I would say, Mr. Chair, no, because they would have, the events of interest would be indoors, and the condition would remain.
Okay. How are my fellow commissioners on this?
It's acceptable to me.
It's reasonable language to me.
I'm comfortable with the language that's just been stated.
As am I. So now we're back to the recommendations of the planning director, which I'm assuming includes this new wording in this condition, nineteen three--
That's correct.
Okay. So commissioners, do I have a recommendation on, or any discussion on the entire recommendations of the planning director, which are indicated on page--
One thirty-six, not there, seven.
One thirty-six. Yes, one thirty-six, one thirty-seven. What's your pleasure at this point?
May I make the comment?
Certainly.
Not to belabor it, looking at condition seventeen, site maintenance, do we need, do we need, on seventeen B, do we need that specific enforcement item? The trash containers should be pulled to the curb, and reassembled early, you know, part of the day, and then returned back at a particular time. When paragraph A states that the project area within the CUP boundary shall be maintained in a manner that is consistent and compatible with surrounding properties of the CUP area, i.e. residences, it seems like it creates a situation where if somebody is remiss, that the county becomes the hatchet person to say, hey, you didn't take any of your trash cans, and yet, a resident or residents in the proximate area that might do the same Help me here.
I thought that Mr. Merton recommended that that be removed.
Yes, he did.
I think that was his recommendation. And so, can that be removed?
Yes.
Thank you. If you wish to--
As part of the ultimate amended recommended staff action, I would request that section seventeen B be removed.
County council, can we vote on that individually, that issue, about removing that condition? Or should we wait?
My recommendation is that it be folded into the main motion--
Okay.
--with regards to all the recommended actions on pages one thirty-six and one thirty-seven.
Okay, Commissioner Rodriguez, when we get to that point, please introduce that. All right, so, your pleasure now.
All right, I'm going to do this, but I'm going to do this with a real heavy heart, just for the simple purpose of clarity. I move that we adopt the recommended actions, one through six, filed on pages one thirty-six and one thirty-seven, with the changes as follows, the deletion of condition seventeen B, and the modified language of nineteen B as presented by staff.
Did you second that, commander? Commander?
Commander.
Captain? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion at this point?
Okay, even though I made the motion, I still have a tremendous problem with not granting the variance, and I think I've made my case pretty clear on that. I understand everybody else's position, but I think that Mr. Newton's arguments are compelling. I think there's sufficient good cause, but at the same time, I think people are entitled to a decision, but I really have a hard time with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Westner. Any other comments or discussion? All right, you want to take a roll vote, or just all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Thank you for a long day. This is one of the most difficult hearings I've ever been in in eight years.
On this side of the table.
Thank you, Mr. Westner. I know you do it with heavy heart. Pardon me, we're going to continue on with the agenda, there's another, some other items, so you can stay or you can leave. Okay, let's go to item nine, report by the planning director on board actions and other matters.
Okay, I don't have too much. I will let you leave early today, I just wanted to, after your nice, long day. One thing that we did have is the board did adopt the initial study assessment guidelines, one part of the Get to Excellence program, so they took that action on Tuesday on all items except biology, and on biology, the board directed staff to go back and work with the ag community, so that's the one thing that we're going to do. That's really all I had to report on, unless you have something for me.
I'd just hand this thing to you. Some time ago, we had that situation up on the Rincon by Faria Beach with the towers, and that went away, for whatever reason. That has not come back in front of us.
I think that those are our next item. When are we meeting again? I believe there's three, all three--
The only reason I say that is because I was up there, and I looked up there, and it looks like they added more.
I saw it on the August 29th, or August 26th meeting, I think that's, I think that item is on there, isn't that correct, Danielle?
Yes.
Yes, that's going to be at the next meeting.
The very next meeting, absolutely.
August 26th.
One more thing. I live in immediate vicinity of Tolan landfill, VRSD's landfill, otherwise known as the dump. Oddly, property owners in the immediate area are complaining about noxious odors, and why, among other things, are fairly recent development. I, when there's a down-valley drift, I get it, too, and I've snuck, I picked it up as far south as the Santa Clara Schoolhouse. And apparently, the property owners immediately affected the closest houses have been in contact with VRSD and whoever the case planner is. I think they're having a hard time believing that there was a problem, and believe me, there was a problem. And I don't know where, I assumed that it might have been, the odor might have been coming from the, I don't know, what's a proper word for the stuff they're depositing, which is, I mean, they're dumping, but I thought the odor might have been coming from that and the fly farm. And so, I've been asked by the people immediately adjacent to the landfill, the closest homeowners, to inquire of you, I'd like to meet with the case planner or someone to talk to him about it, find out what the status of it is. Are they, is daily cover happening? I mean, are we getting flies and odor because of that? Or is that new processing plant in? Some of the people seem to think it's a steam cloud that comes off of it, that, based on the direction of wind goes, wherever it goes, and you pick it up, but it's very noxious. And I think they've only put in one of the four, I don't know what you call the devices that burn this sledge and other things, they've only got a fraction of the project in, and if we're going to get those kind of odors off, someone needs to know about it. Someone needs to investigate.
Okay, so--
It's literally driving people out of their house.
Okay, that would be the first I've heard of it. So, do you want, is your request to meet with the planner, because you can meet with the planner today, or is your request--
I would like to meet with her, find out what's happening, so I could report back to those people.
Absolutely. I can do one of two things. I can absolutely arrange a meeting between you and the planner, that's Scott Allison, a senior planner with the planning department.
Why don't I call you tomorrow and we'll work it out?
Perfect.
Thank you. Kim, I'm trying to recall it, Tolan, didn't we hear an issue or process where they were going to be importing sludge--
Oh, yes.
--or waste, and there's going to be a regular-- The property owners around think it's a steam, a cloud of steam that comes as a result, or if it's a byproduct or whatever, and depending on the prevailing wind, I know when I'm, when I have a down canyon drift, because I'm south of it, I pick it up, and it's really noxious. I don't know what it is. I had assumed it was another source, that the people, that stuff they're dumping in the orchard, whatever you want to call it. No, no, I think, sounds like it's coming from the landfill.
Yes. Anyway, I'll find out. Thank you.
All right, President, this is our meeting. Is it possible, could Danielle, I should know when you're appealing us?
Will you figure anything out, Tim?
Hell, yes.
Don't you think it'll be appealed?
I would say no.
Pardon?
I would say no. If I was a gambling person, I would gamble no appeal on this one. But we'll see, maybe I've proven wrong.
If they haven't, if they don't, you've certainly done a good job with this. Wonderful job, putting this all together, meeting with all these people, in a very emotional issue, as we know. Well, thank you, people, we'll see you on the 26th, August.